I think we have room for everybody tonight, but if we don't, make sure you get -- if more people come, make sure you let us know and we'll make sure to get more chairs or get more space for everybody. I said cookies, lemonade, please share in that. I know we have a lot of important people out there. Every single person has an important -- every single chair has an important person in it. So I'm not going to recognize individuals tonight, but if the board members have anybody special they see that they want to recognize, please do so. With that, I'll turn it over to Dr. Gist for her presentations.
Thank you, Madam President, members of the board, and everyone who's joined us tonight here at the -- in the Selman Room and also Facebook Live and in other ways. We're glad to have you with us as a part of this important conversation. Tonight, we have a number of things that we'll be talking about. One in particular is a conversation that we began back in the fall. And this is a body of work that involved members of our Community Advisory Council. So we asked our Community Advisory Council to come with us on a journey to discuss the names of our schools. And we spent many weeks talking about what it means to name a school, the historical context in which schools are named, how that happens, what happens when we honor someone with that kind of an action. And we did really important work together. I know that since I was able to be a part of those conversations, I learned so much throughout those conversations. I learned a lot of historical things that I wasn't aware of, but I also learned more about myself, I learned more about the members of the council, my colleagues. And it was complicated. So I will tell you, I went into it thinking that it was a process that was going to help us increase clarity and understanding. And in some ways, it absolutely did that. But in so many ways, it also just raised to me the fact that these kinds of discussions are much more complex than we imagined even initially going into them. And -- but also just extraordinarily valuable. So there are a number of things that are happening tonight, including the presentation of a report. It includes some considerations for the board as well as some important historical information that can be valuable to all of us as Tulsans. So we have representatives from the council who are here tonight, who've put in a tremendous amount of work into this effort. And we also have our facilitators who led us through the process. So I'm going to introduce our facilitators. And then actually, let me start asking all the members of council who are here to stand, and let's recognize them before we recognize the council, the facilitators. Thank you. Thank you so much to each of you for your time and efforts on this project. I'm going to introduce our lead facilitator, Tamara Leback, and our co-facilitators, Dr. Carlos Hill and our community leader and activist, Hannibal Johnson. We'd love for them to share with the board and others more about where we are. So Miss Leback.
Thank you, Dr. Gist. Dr. Hill is in Oklahoma City at Norman, actually, where they've already closed the schools for tomorrow, is unable to make it to be with us. So I just wanted to take a moment to go over with you the report that is public now, obviously, and that you'll have a chance to read in detail, just by breaking down a little bit about the experience of the council and then letting you know what is actually included in the report that you'll be reviewing. First and foremost, I want you to know that the council was made up of a standing body of community leaders that represent various sectors of Tulsa. They represent nonprofit, religious, corporate, and government leaders, as well as parents of Tulsa Public Schools. We are excited to have over 30 members who signed on to this report unanimously. And we are very excited about the breadth and depth of the work that they did in order to come to that conversation. In September, the council secured for -- was secured for the special project. They had one-on-one meetings with me. Many of them had an opportunity to dive deeper into the language of cultural competency. And there's an appendix there in your report where you can learn a little bit more about the kind of work that they did. October was our initial meeting where we did a lot of trust building and had opportunities to divide up all of the building sites and names among the council themselves to actually become learners and do some of the work of digging in deep to where the -- to the namesakes of our buildings and sites. In November, we had a history panel and did some confirmation bias conversation, really digging deep too into who's present and who's not present, and how we might best serve our diverse community. In December, there was a subcommittee that was formed in order to begin writing what were to be the considerations that you'll see in front of you. And we presented those considerations as a subcommittee of the council to the entire council to then add comments, discuss. The entire council had input from beginning to end, really, of the entire document. And then in January, the considerations were finalized, research was gathered and edited for voice and public input, and in February, the report in total was discussed and finalized. We talked already, who is the council? As I said, they are made up of a variety of constituencies that represent leaders across our city. But I wanted to break down the report for you. The report consists of, first and foremost, a letter of intent. That letter of intent sets up our journey for you and then shows you exactly who signed on as the advisory council. Then you'll see considerations for the board. These are the learnings, the big takeaways, and the considerations that we hope that the Board of Education will consider as they look at the names, the building and site names that have been researched. And then the process document, which walks you through the information that we discussed and the kinds of questions that we asked, as well as some of the big takeaways and presentations that were offered by some of our panel members. And then lastly, you'll have the historical research document, which goes through all of the site names and gives you an opportunity to be able to see what it was that we in fact discovered. Because I just have a few minutes, I wanted to be able to highlight for you some of the considerations that the council discussed and came up with. You will have the full report there in front of you, but I want to make sure that I just lift up a couple of things for you this evening. One is that Tulsa Public Schools should consider the impact of its building names on our diverse constituencies. We looked in detail at what it means to name a building, what it means to have a site that is honoring a specific individual. There were many different feelings across the board, and I hope that you'll see that these considerations reflect the kinds of conversations that we had. As Dr. Gist has already alluded to, it was a complex level of conversation across the board. Second consideration highlighted, when the board considers altering or renaming a building, the council would like the board to consider a deliberate process that incorporates community input and documents the motivations for the change. One of the things that we discovered was quite difficult to even track down motivations for names. And so we -- one of the things that we want to make sure comes out of this is that all of the documentation going forward is clear and precise, and we hope that that will continue. Lastly, the board will contribute to the ongoing story of Tulsa Public Schools, whether or not they approve a name change. That's something that came out of many very difficult conversations, where basically because we are digging deep into these sites and building names, the choice to even leave a name is still a choice. And we think that it's important for the board to consider that as they do this work. And then lastly, if a name is altered or removed, Tulsa Public Schools should ensure that the history of the building and the reason for the change are not lost. As we mentioned before, it was very difficult for us to be able to track down some of the whys behind the information. And so we hope that whatever work it is that you take on, that you will document your steps as they go along. So with that, I respectfully submit our report, and we hope that it is something that will help benefit you all as you do the work of making these decisions. Thank you.
I'll just say one last round of thank yous to Tamara and Hannibal and Carlos, as well as all of the members of the council. This Community Advisory Council has led work important to broadly across the district. And we spent these last few months focused on this topic. But we're all very excited to get back to the bigger work of the district. And so we'll be convening them back together again to move back to that bigger picture work. But this was certainly very important and very valuable and helpful. So thank you to all of you again for that. More will be coming, next steps on that soon. Next, I want to touch on something that many of you may be aware, that we made an announcement this afternoon that we're making a leadership transition at Edison Preparatory. And we have decided that we will be making a shift with the school leadership there. This was a decision that I made jointly with a number of people, including Principal Dixie Spear. And we just really believed that this was under the circumstances, given the nature of where the community was and what was needed, that we all felt like it would be in the best interest of the students at the school for us to make this change. With that said, you've heard me talk before about my respect and appreciation for Principal Spear, and I want to just reiterate that now. I do very much know Principal Spear. I know her as a leader, I know her as an educator. She's incredibly talented, and she's a strong leader and manager. We wanted to give her an opportunity to make some comments tonight. So she's here with us, and I'm going to ask her if she'll come forward and share some thoughts.
Good evening. Thank you so much. Good evening, Superintendent Gist, Madam President, and School Board and community members. Thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak with you this evening. I could stand before you tonight and rehash all of the events of the last month, but that's not beneficial to the students at Edison. What I would like to do is share a little bit about who I am as a person. This experience has provided me the opportunity to reflect on what I believe as a leader. First and foremost, I know all students in this country deserve opportunities to be successful. If it had not been for the opportunities I had in Manita Public Schools, I would have never had the opportunity to earn my college degrees at Northeastern State University. As a teacher for over a decade, I was always guided by doing what was best for my students. This meant leveling the playing field so all students were afforded opportunities to be engaged both academically and through extracurricular activities. This is who I am, and this is what I believe students deserve. Sometimes, we make decisions based on what's best for students. It can get really hard for adults. As educators, we are servants to the future, not only for our students, but for society as a whole. I believe all students need and deserve educators who are willing to put students first and adults second. I know that at the end of the day, none of us are done, we're complete, and that we are on a journey. The day we have arrived to our destination is the day we are all stagnant. If we approach obstacles and challenges with an opportunity to grow personally and professionally, there is peace and satisfaction in understanding the lessons learned. From this experience at Edison, I intend on being a better leader, colleague, friend, and parent. I also feel that grace is a fundamental to our interactions with each other. I have been afforded grace by my parents, teachers, students, and friends. Furthermore, I have extended grace to students and teachers alike. I know and understand everyone has a story, and I've often made it my goal to know that story. Edison Prep is an extraordinary school supported by passionate, dedicated members of the community. Principal Vineyard, I wish you the very best as you step into this role. I look forward to working with you to introduce you to a committed Edison team. I believe the team stands ready for a smooth transition and a positive, productive path forward. Based on the changes that we've already implemented, the insights of our teacher climate culture survey, the continued engagement of our teacher leaders, team members, and parent community, Principal Vineyard, you have a strong foundation to move the school community forward in unity. I think we can certainly all agree that our students deserve the opportunity to focus their energies and talents on their education. Students of Edison, I sincerely wish you the best and encourage you to embrace the educational experience you have been afforded at Edison. Remember that the only two things you can control are your choices and your attitude. Always move forward with integrity, empathy, and high standards for yourself. If you will do that, you will go far in life and do great things. Thank you so much.
I want to thank you, Principal Spear, for your long service at Tulsa Public Schools and your time at Edison. I also want to thank everyone in the Edison community. I know this has been a very difficult time for everyone, teachers, students, families, and certainly for Principal Spear as well. We know that this -- that it doesn't -- that making an adjustment to leadership in response to that does not mean that the issues have been resolved. We know that we have the concerns that we've heard from teachers and parents and students. We will continue to act upon those and do what we need to do to make the improvements and get Edison back on track. I also want to introduce Principal Vineyard, who's here. If you'll stand so everyone can see you. Thank you, Principal Vineyard. We are excited to have you as a part of Tulsa Public Schools and are grateful for the work that you've been leading in our district for the last six months and appreciate you stepping in during this interim period. This will be an 18-month appointment for an interim principal so that we can get things where they need to be and then do a local and national search to find the right permanent next leader for the Edison community. So with that said, Madam President, that concludes my special presentations tonight.
Thank you, Dr. Gist. Thank you, Principal Spear and Principal Vineyard. We'll move to the consent agenda now. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda? Selman. Any discussion regarding the consent agenda or any items on the consent agenda? I'll call for the vote, Ms. Fay.
Aye.
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 Aye. On the consent agenda, we'll move back to the minutes. Is there a motion to approve the minutes of the board meeting of February 5th?
Salute.
I'll call for the vote, Ms. Fay.
Aye.
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 Aye. Just want to make sure you guys know that we're well people up here. That we make mistakes too. We'll move to the action agenda now. We have four items on the action agenda. Beginning with F1, relocate Bell Primary School from the Bell Primary Building to the Bell Upper Building beginning in the 2018-19 school year. Selman. Are there any questions about item F1 or discussion? Seeing no questions, I'll call for the vote, Ms. Shelton.
Aye.
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 Aye. F2 is a recommendation to relocate Tulsa Honor Academy Charter Schools of Eastside Academy to the Bell Primary Building on or around July 1st, 2018. Selman. Second. Are there any questions or discussion regarding item F2? Seeing no questions, I'll call for the vote, Ms. Fay.
Aye.
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 Aye. Move to item F3. It's a recommendation to revise school board policies 4901, 4902, and 4903 regarding non-discrimination. I think we have a staff member ready to present on this item.
Yes, Madam President, and board members. At the last meeting, some board members, board member Percival specifically, I recall, had some questions about this item, and it is a really important one. And we thought this would be a good opportunity to have our General Counsel, Janet Burke, address this a little bit more and talk through what we're doing, a little bit more about that, and why we're doing it.
Thank you, Superintendent Gist. Madam President, members of the board, it's my pleasure to talk with you a little bit more about the policy changes that we're proposing. So as you may recall, we spent the last few months working together with our board committees to devise some policy changes to our non-discrimination statements here in the district. We have at present 4901, 4901R, 4902, 3, and 4903R. That's a lot of policies. And you will see a lot of repetition, a lot of overlap from one document to the next. So the number one goal of this revision was to streamline the policy language so that we don't have overlap, we don't have prohibitive language, and we have an organized structure for the documents themselves so it's easy to understand what the expectations are of all of us in our community, as well as how to address concerns that may have -- that may need to be made. So number one, streamline the language. Number two, we want to make sure that we're clarifying reporting procedures. It's not appropriate that any individual would have a question as to what to do when there's allegation of discrimination. So we made sure that the language was crisp, precise, well-organized, and focuses on the appropriate individuals making the allegation. So you'll see with the improved language now in 4901R, clarifies all those reporting procedures. The third goal we had for this revision was to make sure to clarify the expectation that every employee in our district report discrimination when it occurs. There shouldn't be any question that discrimination has no place in our district, in our culture, in our schools certainly. And so when there's evidence of discrimination, it's important that we look into it. So those are the three goals, and I hope that you find that we've met those goals. In particular, looking at the climate that we're in right now, the expectations that we have of ourselves as a district, it was important that we take a look at these policies. So the approach that we had for the revisions themselves was to make sure that we maintain the substance of the documents. We didn't need -- we didn't think that we'd need to heighten expectations, change our commitment, certainly not lessen expectations. So the substantive protections within these policies remain the same. Instead, we wanted to make sure that we describe discrimination as broad category misconduct that consists of one or more specific prohibitive types of discrimination, whether it's just general discrimination, which would mean like differential treatment, harassment, sexual harassment, hostile environment, and retaliation. We made no changes at all to the classes of individuals who are protected under our policy. That remains the same. So in essence, what you will see that 4901R -- excuse me, 4901, the policy document itself appropriately sets forth the prohibitions, expectations, and commitments we make in the district. It's the high-level document. 4901R sets forth the definitions that are pertinent to these policies, the procedures, and the technical requirements. So now we have a crisp delineation between policy language and procedural language. So that we have a policy 4901 supported by regulation 4901R. So the technical effect in terms of practicality is what happens with the documents are the following. As I mentioned, no substantive change in the actual protections of these policies. But now we will have just 4901 and 4901R. It's the regulation pertaining to 4901. And we will eliminate 4902, 3, and 4903R. Those policies dealt with the specific categories of harassment, sexual harassment, and procedures related to those types of discrimination. As I mentioned earlier, discrimination is a broad category of prohibited conduct, and it's appropriate for all of them to be spoken of in one particular document with all of the pertinent regulations and procedures so that any individual, knowing what context they're in, has one place to go because things get messy, and it's appropriate that they know what to do next and what the expectations are of ourselves at the district and of those people who have complaints to make. The changes itself are not real easy to track in a technical sense where I can compare documents for you. But at a high level, please note that now 4901 and 4901R reference all forms of prohibited discrimination and organize by topic. So you'll see definition sections, you'll see complaint process sections, you'll see reporting information. And this will help the reader more quickly know where to go and what to do next and what's expected of us. And then finally, we just improved the language. Sometimes, one or two words works better than five or six. So those types of general bringing up language also look good. We also made some specific clarifications and even some, I would admit, some additions to 4901 and 4901R that I'll take the time to mention to you right now. First, we make clear that there is a specific process for how to report discrimination and provide explicit terms now for the definitions of those terms. So we provided clarity, as I mentioned earlier, including new definitions that did not previously exist. They were always the same according to law. We're not changing the law here. We're simply reflecting the law in those policies. And then secondly, we provide express correction that employees report discrimination, including discrimination of others they have witnessed or become aware of. And then finally, provide contact information for the U.S. Department of Education's Office of Civil Rights should the individual wish to go to a federal department as opposed to process and report through the district. So that's the revision process and outcome as a whole. And I'm happy to answer any precise questions or just general questions that you may have.
Ms. Shelton.
I just wanted to thank Chief Burke for your work on this. As a member of the policy committee, these are really excellent changes. It does clarify, I think, for families and students and teachers what their rights are, not only protection from discrimination, but from retaliation for reporting discrimination. And so I appreciate all of your efforts to make it clear for our -- thank you. I was remiss in not mentioning that retaliation is a form of discrimination and have explicit prohibitions against retaliation, as well as explanations of how retaliation can occur, the different forms that it can take. And it's incredibly important so that individuals feel protected when they make a complaint and know that their participation as a witness, as a complainant, as just the person involved sidelines, that there's not going to be regrets taken against them simply by virtue of participating in protective activity. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Burke, and thank you to the policy committee for your work on this. I'm sure that we'll get this information to Mr. Percival. I'm sorry he couldn't be here tonight. He has an immediate family member that's very, very ill. And we were communicating throughout the day, and he really wanted to be here, but in the end, family comes first, and that's where he needed to be. So I'm sure you all will get this information to him. So thank you. I need a motion on this item. Second. I'll call for the vote, Ms. Shelton.
Aye.
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 Aye. That brings us to our information agenda, and I will turn this portion of the meeting over to Dr. Gist.
Thank you, Madam President, and these are our information items. I'll remind everyone that information items are brought to the board for consideration. No action is taken on information items. And if they ever are acted upon, it will come back before the board as either an action item on the agenda or on the consent agenda. So we'll start with items G1 through G3, and these will be presented by our Chief of Schools, Dr. Eric Green. Dr. Green.
Thank you, Dr. Gist, Madam President, members of the board. Item G1 enters into an memorandum of understanding of Tulsa's operating in unity, creating hope, which is also known as TOUCH here in Tulsa, Oklahoma. This is to implement a 21st century learning community for the after-school program of Showto Elementary and for Central High School. TOUCH Tulsa has operated an out-of-school program with Central Junior High for nine years. They've also served Memorial Junior High and Mark Twain and Marshall Elementaries with privately funded after-school programming. TOUCH provides community support and stability in the educational environment for students and families at these schools. And the program is scheduled to start March 6th this year and to run through June 30th through the end of this year. There's no cost to the school. For item G2, it's a renewal of the lease agreement with Pearson's NCS, formerly known as -- as the National Computer Services out of Austin, Texas, for the rental of Thoreau Demonstration Academy. It's June 1st through July 31st of this year. Pearson has used the building for grading tests for the National Board of Professional Teaching Standards for the past 18 years, so renewal of that lease agreement. There's no cost to the district, but Pearson would pay the district $15,525 for the use of the building and $2,239 for utilities. And item G3 enters into a contract with Tulsa University of Tulsa to host Rogers High School's JROTC Military Ball on April 21st, 2018. Tulsa University Allen Chapman Activity Center will be rented to host up to 200 people, which includes meals and entertainment with a DJ. Military Ball is an annual event recognizing achievements of cadets in the JROTC program. The cost is not to exceed $5,000, which would be taken from the Rogers School Activity Fund, number 564.
Thank you. Thank you, Dr. Green. Items G4 through G6 will be presented by our Chief Learning and Talent Officer, Devin Fletcher. Mr. Fletcher.
Thank you, Dr. Gist. Madam President, members of the Board. Item G4 falls under the Teaching and Marketing Department, and it allows for us to renew our science equipment for the, out of the 2015 bond package. This is a routine item and the cost is not to exceed $150,000. We've not selected or identified a vendor yet, and we're still going through that process. Item G5 and G6 support our work in the Talent Management Department. Item G5 is a routine in nature, it's related to our create and delete of positions. On this particular agenda, you'll note that we've got speech, language, pathology supervisors, school psychologist supervisors, and related services supervisors. These supervisors, if you recall, or these roles, if you recall, stem back to earlier conversations that we had in the fall. We had a number of members from the exceptional student support team that came in front of the Board seeking support in a reprieve, in a sense, given the nature of the work that they do and also the level, the high level of caseloads in terms of the shortage that we see across the field, particularly for speech pathologists and psychologists. These roles will serve as case managers, providing adults learning opportunities, helping map out the testing protocols, and working with each individual staff member to support their student distribution and compliance efforts that are required by the state across the three various role types. One of the things I think we talked about back in the fall is that under exceptional students, you have a number of different roles, psychologists, social, speech, language, pathologists, occupational, physical therapists, all who have highly technical backgrounds and we are not aligned to support them strategically in terms of their growth and development and also within their work. And so, you'll note that these roles are being created, and you'll see that there are deletions that are related to each of these as well. In each of the buckets for speech pathologists and school psychologists, there are four deletions. Those deletions on each relate to quadrant roles that were once held by speech pathologists and psychologists, which allowed them to serve individual sites, but it reduced their caseload and so they were not able to support students in the most full capacity. And so, this allows for us to provide much more direct support to students and supporting the technical nature of the compliance management and development for each of these roles. I'll pause there in case there are any questions. Dr. Higginson.
Can I go back to G4?
Yes.
Chief Fletcher, I was just wondering if this science equipment is for a number of schools, or, you know, if you could tell me where this equipment might go?
The science equipment more directly relates to our secondary schools in general, but it's across all schools. It replenishes the materials based on an annual basis. We lose things, things become outdated, and when I say lose, not lose in terms of not having the inventory, but in terms of it being overly used, and so we want to ensure that we've got the highest safety rate of materials in place. Where we see most of these go is to our secondary schools.
Ms. Shelton.
On G4, how did we come up with the $150,000?
Based on routine expenses every year. So, looking back at what we typically spend, looking at the run rate at this particular point in the year, and then building it out so that as we need to purchase the materials for individual school sites or for the district warehouse, we've got the flexibility to do so. And the bond dollars are specifically tied to the safety equipment, and so it's only used for that purpose and used directly for students.
Thank you.
Item G6 enters into a memorandum of understanding with TNTP of Brooklyn, New York, and it's to create a district-operated alternative certification program that we introduce to U.S. Tulsa Teacher Corps. As you recall, we were awarded a grant through TNTP as part of a state C grant for $5 million. This memorandum allows for us to continue the work in the research to do the work, as well as building out the training program over the course of the summer in our first year launch. We're excited about this. It'll give us an opportunity to really serve our novice educators, particularly in a space where we're seeing up to 25% turnover on an annual basis. And so, this gives us a great opportunity to, one, recruit, and then also to retain, and so, again, super excited about the opportunity.
Chief Fletcher, this is to serve traditionally trained teachers as well as alternatively certified, is that correct?
Yes. So, our ultimate goal is that in the first year, because we're launching and there's a lot of work that has to be done, that we will serve our elementary largely for special education and just general ed. Over time, the goal is to serve as many teachers as we can, given the need and opportunities for us to really ground in what we believe the Tulsa way would be.
Dr. Dicker.
Thank you, President Trevor. I just wanted to say that this is an amazing opportunity that Tulsa's been awarded this $5 million grant. And I do have a friend who went to the job fair and attended this session and told me it was just very professionally done and a really exciting opportunity. So, anybody out there interested in teaching in Tulsa, this is a great way to enter the profession.
No further questions?
All right, moving on, we have items G7 through G12, and these will be presented by our Executive Director of Bond Projects, Chris Hutchins. Mr. Hutchins.
Thank you, Superintendent Dinkins. President, Madam President, and Board Members. G7, 8, and 9 all deal with the awarding of the contract for the Anderson Elementary Interior Renovation Project, and these projects are currently out to bid, and they'll be brought back at our next meeting with the guaranteed maximum cost associated with individual contractors' names. The next items are G10, 11, and 12. Those are for the, to enter into contract, supplemental number 12 for trigoneral contractors, and that is for the interior improvements of McLean, as well as G11 being the, provide engineering services for the improvements of McLean and Bell Elementary. And finally, G12 is to approve the supplemental contract with NavHawk Construction to be our construction manager for the interior improvements at Bell Elementary. Are there any questions?
No more questions from the Board. We'll move on to staff reports. So, are there staff reports this evening?
Yes, Madam President, we do have a staff report this evening. I'm really looking forward to this conversation. It is extraordinarily important work that we're leading here in the district and quite timely, because I know there has been a lot of discussion about student behavior, about discipline, and about what the district is doing and leading in this work. So, we have our Executive Director of Student and Family Support Services, Dr. Ebony Johnson, along with the Director of Student and Family Advocacy, Oliver Wallace, Dr. Wallace, as well as a team of esteemed principals and some teachers, I believe, as well, and they are going to present a report on student behavior management and what we are leading here in the district. And we will start with Dr. Eric Green. Dr. Green.
Good evening, everyone. Dr. Gist, Madam President, members of the Board. We, as Dr. Gist has already said, we're very excited to continue this conversation around behavior management and student engagement. We know that we continue to hear, to get feedback from parents, from students, from our teachers, of course, from school leaders regarding disruptive behaviors and just the best ways to engage our students to maximize learning time. And so, we know that this is a continued work. This isn't a one-and-done. You put in place a policy or put in place a particular practice or set of practices and all of a sudden, we've got the behaviors in place that we want to see. This is continued work. It's dynamic work. As our society and our communities continue to shift, as the needs of students and student families and all those things working together, as those shift, we've got to continue to rethink and retool and to deepen our understanding of what those needs are and how we address those most effectively. And so, so we want to start with just grounding ourselves in our guiding principles, and the first will be to, we want to contribute to the well-being and safety and the success of all of our students in all of our schools. And really being super clear that we're talking about all students in all schools. And because we know, again, as I was saying before, those needs are so varied from school to school, age group to age group, student to student, we've got to make sure that whatever we're doing, all the policies and practices and our understandings of those needs, in order to get there, the students' well-being and safety and success, that all of those practices match up. We also want to make sure that, just from a very basic level, that we provide the safe and supportive, joyful learning environments that we've been talking about for some time now, for some years now. These are not just words. And we understand that, you know, again, we continue to get feedback on what is or isn't happening in schools, what is or isn't happening from one classroom to the next. And so, I think you'll continue to hear from us this evening, and as we're thinking through and sharing our learnings and our continued and evolving work, that this work is in fact dynamic, and therefore, our practices and our understandings have to continue to evolve over time. What do we better understand from last year? Again, we've been talking about this for a bit and sharing our practices, sharing data with you on student behaviors and the professional development that we've provided and the shifts that we've made in our thinking about how to best engage students and how to address their needs. There are a few things that we want to call out in terms of our large, our big-ticket learnings from last year. One, just better understanding the need to support our teachers and principals around student behaviors. It seems like a no-brainer, but to state this here, we want to name for our teachers and for our leaders that we get that certainly not all of the understanding, not all the knowledge around engaging students resides here in this district. In fact, we know for a fact, the lion's share of that understanding is out in our schools and from school to school and classroom to classroom. And so, to the extent possible, we are continuing to understand what is working, and you'll hear from some of our amazing school leaders and teachers later today, or later in this presentation. We want to continue to pull that learning together and make sure that it's shared across the district, even as we look outside of the district for additional possibilities and supports with some of our partners. And so, this past year, or this year, we set site-based goals to decrease suspensions while providing that direct leadership support and focused de-escalation strategies to, with our school leaders and with school staff. Again, we know that in order to increase and improve our practices, we need to have a North Star. We need to have a goal that we've set for ourselves, and in doing so, we're challenging ourselves to question and to retool and rethink and improve upon the lessons that we've learned and the things that we've seen that have worked. And there have been, and you'll hear about a bit of this, there have been some things that have worked for us. Also, we've learned that our students' behaviors have had various origins, which require a more specialized training with our school leaders and teachers and our entire district team. So, again, this to some might seem like a no-brainer, but as we continue to understand student by student what occurred in a particular moment to cause a student to disengage and to engage in some negative behaviors, we're looking at and learning from those individual incidents, much like surgeons, and really trying to understand, pull apart those behaviors, the antecedents, what preceded that behavior, all of the things that kind of led up to that, what we as adults do or don't do that might, might or might not support the student in making better choices and really trying to learn from that. And so, in this year, really supporting our school leaders by providing more professional learning opportunities, especially but not limited to trauma-informed practices and social-emotional learning and restorative practices. None of those are new, and some of those terms are newer, but those practices continue to evolve over time. Trauma is certainly not a new thing to our students or to our schools, and I don't want to in any way suggest that this is something that's new and we're just kind of getting our heads around it. The reality is, though, the kinds of trauma, the way that trauma shows up in our schools, in homes and neighborhoods and around school communities, the social and emotional needs of our students, especially in an age where information is shared and whether it's true or not, lots of information is shared on social media and those sorts of things that start to create additional angst and challenges for young people in the school community, and just our need to acknowledge that all of us, someone, I think, Principal Searier earlier talked about grades, all of us make mistakes, and we've got a job, we as educators have a job to do to ensure that those mistakes are created. From those mistakes come lessons. And so, creating opportunities for all of us to be restored in the moment, sure, there are consequences that need to happen, but there's also an opportunity for us to seize those moments as teachable moments, and for us as adults, as educators, to think through it. So, how might that happen? What steps might it actually take to ensure that in addition to any consequence or punishment or what have you that might be appropriate in a particular case, that there's learning that occurs so that we don't make those same mistakes over and over? And the last thing I'll note in terms of our learning from last year is just that we've got to better support our schools when the district, we can better support our schools when the district teams are better aligned to the work that's happening in the schools around student behaviors, and that we're more collaborative and consistent in our use of data throughout the district. We've shared previously some of the data tools that we have available to us and that our schools have, school leaders and teachers have available to them. We are absolutely doubling down our efforts to understand, not only in the moment, an incident that occurs, but over time, what are the trends that we're seeing. And we know that those, there are some longer-term trends, and there are some trends that we tend to see over the, over a shorter term, over the course of a year or a particular shorter set of years. And so, again, with all of that, we believe that we are deepening our own understanding of the nuanced work dynamic, as I said earlier, the dynamic work that we must do with our students, and ensuring that we as a community of students and ensuring that we, as a community of educators, continue to retool, improve, refine our understanding of where our students are and what the needs are and how we can best address those. To further this conversation and to lead us through more of the learning and more of the work that's being done, I want to bring up Dr. Ebony Johnson and Dr. Wallace to continue this conversation. I do want to state, because this, as you might imagine, this office, the Office of Student and Family Support Services and specifically the work around discipline and student engagement, they often see some of the most challenging situations that we deal with in our district. And often, there's, you know, there's students crying out for help and all kinds of situations that are occurring. I do want to just name and acknowledge the hard work and the great work that they are doing and leading us through very, very challenging situations to continue to increase our knowledge and to hone and rein in the knowledge that exists in various pockets throughout the district so that we, as an entire district, can continue to see the benefits. And so, with that, Dr. Gist, uh, Dr. Johnson?
What an honor. Yeah, you said that again, Dr. Gist. Thank you so much, Chief Green. So what are our primary responses to behavioral challenges? I just wanted to be clear about the difference in exclusionary discipline and restorative discipline. So part of the slide here, you'll see that exclusionary discipline is any type of disciplinary action that removes or excludes a student from the student's usual educational setting. Two of the most common exclusionary disciplinary practices that we use within our schools are suspension and expulsion. But it also includes in-house suspension, trace satellite, buddy teacher classroom, and any other exclusionary practice that's used within our schools. Restorative discipline is disciplinary action that provides a setting and opportunity for the student who committed the harm and the harmed to communicate and devise an agreed-upon resolution. Now, this is coupled with a healthy way for all of those involved to re-enter the learning environment. But I wanted to be clear about the two terms. Restorative discipline does not mean a lack of consequences and accountability. You'll hear more from my colleague, Dr. Wallace, as he details out a little bit more of the data regarding some of the consequences that have taken place for infractions. But I will say, our biggest challenge is to better support our schools, our school leaders, our teachers and staff with how do we ensure that our students are number one, safe, that the environment is conducive for learning, and that we can then collectively figure out a way to ensure that that student's discipline is appropriate for the infraction and that the student actually learns from the actions that they took so that they can make better choices next time. So that's the ultimate goal. And that, to me, looks like a sweet spot in between the student not disrupting other students' ability to learn and not disrupting their entire learning environment, but then dealt with appropriately and what I would call peel the onion back on exactly what the underlying issues are that's causing that student to behave in that manner. So what has discipline traditionally looked like? Student swears at a teacher, so rule is broken, consequence is given, five to 10 days suspension. Student fight, 10 days suspension. Student skipped, truant, not at school. In the past, they would get three to five days of suspension. How about the irony in that? Student is already missing school, they enjoy not being at school, they skip. They're not where they're supposed to be and then unfortunately, we then give them additional days for them to do more of that. Students under the influence of a substance and we give them 10 days of suspension, rule broken, consequence given. Failure to follow minor sanctions, 10 days and in-school detention or three days of suspension because there's a likely chance if they're failing to show an ID or failing to go where they're supposed to go, we then believe that 10 days of detention would help them better understand that until they say, "I'm not going to serve my 10 days of detention", and then we render three days of suspension. So those are past practices, those are traditional practices from the past. What we're attempting to do now is go from rules being broken and consequence given to rule broken, better understand all the factors involved, understand what the appropriate consequence is once you understand what has happened. All the individuals get an opportunity to then communicate and reconcile. And that's, again, including students to students, student and staff, parents and school, and so forth. And then, how do we then re-enter the school setting in a more healthy way? Just to give clarity on restorative practices, it's a set of principles that we use. We value those principles in order to build community. The goal is to respond to harm and conflict and provide individual support for the individuals that are in need. Want to spend a little bit of time on some actual practical examples. These are things that actually have taken place in our district. Want to give you a little bit more of an overview of how we resolve disciplinary situations right in action. So Incident A, we have two elementary students, they were fighting on the playground. The teachers on duty broke up the fight and brought both students into the principal's office. Resolution for this situation, the principal reviewed the situation, heard from both students, and allowed the students to explain how they should have handled the situation differently. Both received three days of suspension. In addition, students were asked how their actions affect other students feeling safe at school and ways that they can resolve the situation in the future. Students then apologized to their classmates and teachers. School put systems and a plan in place for students to talk to adults for help. Incident B, several students were in the hallway and late for class. I'm sorry, guys, bear with me. I did teach reading and English, so I'm gonna, okay, I'll go faster. The school leader told students to get to class. Students began to go to class while one student refused to go and argued with the school leader. The school leader told the student that they would have to go to trace satellite, which is the, what in the past, people considered an in-house placement. Trace satellite now, and that they have not gone to class and then the student refused to go where they were supposed to and then cursed at the school leader. Resolution, school leader contacted student's family for a conference. Student was assigned trace satellite for a longer period of time. Student's family agreed to shadow student at the school for a few days after the incident in order to build relationship between school and home. Last incident I'll share tonight. The class was sitting in their seats when a student came in late. The student walked in and threw food at another student laughing. The food hit another student in the room who got up embarrassed and both students began to argue and disrupt the class. Resolution, both students were sent to the dean. Student's families were contacted and a success plan was written for the student throwing the food. Staff implemented a plan for students to be observed during breakfast, not bringing food out of the cafeteria, and students agreed to plan as well as cleaning up the classroom after the incident. The students also apologized to the class and the other students. So these are three examples of how school leaders use a varied level of approaches in order to solve conflicts, and it just depends on each particular situation. So, within Tulsa Public Schools, we do have clear and consistent behavioral expectations. And at this time, I would like to call up Dr. Oliver Wallace so that he can detail more about our Student and Family Guide to Success and specifically the Behavior Response Plan information. Dr. Wallace?
Thank you, Dr. Johnson, Madam President, Dr. Gist, members of the board. Just want to share with you a little information about how we operate and support school leaders at Tulsa Public. What is the Behavior Response Plan? I actually brought a copy. For those of you who are not highly admitted to our schools, this copy, this guide helps us work through very complicated situations that exist in our schools. Often times, if not all, the school leaders and myself, along with others, we will look at this guide to help resolve any conflict in our schools. This is what binds us. This is what keeps us safe. This is what keeps us creating this positive culture in Tulsa Public Schools in terms of behavior. Behavior Response Plan is a guideline for school teams to respond to behavioral issues. It details all disciplinary infractions and an array of consequences. It also details alternative options. It supports and provides resources for our families. What are some of the disciplinary responses for schools use? This is not limited to the ones you see here. These are the bulk of the responses that we rely on, such as in-school disciplinary response, restorative conferences, we have detention, we really support team conference, staff conferences, we support community service, school service. We also look at change of placement. If the consequence rises to the level of change of placement, we will consider that as an option. What changes have been made to the VRP? I want to pause. I've shared with you before in a past presentation that when we have any changes that's reflected in the VRP, it starts with the community of individuals. It starts with school leaders. Our leadership from Tulsa Association of Senior School Principals, our leadership from Tulsa Association of Elementary School Principals, TCTA, cross-functional, cross-departmental leaders, all come together, Chief Wick's office, all come together to discuss issues that we are experiencing in our schools. We share trends that we're seeing in our schools and where we can make recommendations in our VRP. We make those recommendations from this community of leaders. It's not just one person that makes these changes. So I want to give you an example. Accessor referrals. Professionally, personally, as a former school principal, I never really understood accessory referrals. It's very broad. It's, it was a code that was used when a student had seven or eight referrals in two weeks. And here you come from a last referral and infraction for the ninth time and the school leader was able to say, "Okay, you have excessive referrals." So we saw a fit that we deleted this from our guide. The team of us, we saw that that was a practice that we didn't want to support. It was unnecessary practice. Fighting was changed in 2016, 2017, from 211 to 300. In 2012, use of possession of drugs was moved from 212 and our tiered approach to 313. Skipping or cutting class was lowered to, from 215 to 111. These changes happened in 2016, 17. There were no changes in 2017, 2018 school year.
Dr. Wallace?
Yes?
You might remind everyone that 100 is your lowest level and 200, 300, 400 is the top.
Thank you.
So if you see something going from a 200 to 300, it's a more severe offense or could incur more severe consequences?
Absolutely, absolutely. Our tier 100 is where we really rely on our restorative conversations. Teachers are able to have conversations and work through those lower-level infractions. What you don't see is a 400 level, which are more extreme cases. Don't want to get caught up in those extreme cases, but they are threat to, with intent to kill, threat to do harm. Those are extreme cases. So these are just some in the middle that we felt like needed some tweaking from 100 to 300. Thank you, Madam President. So how are decisions made about behavior responses and classroom management? Each school has the opportunities to create their own school-wide handbook based on the unique needs of each school community. And you're going to hear some examples from our school leaders in just a few minutes. Schools are able to implement various procedural and behavioral tier intervention strategies for their sites. And also, schools are able to implement and develop strategies that are aligned to the Behavior Response Plan as they see fit. What tools do teachers use to manage behavior? I will start by sharing with you, No-Nonsense Nurture is a four-step model that creates a safe and predictable classroom environment through building of life, altering relationships. It is not mandated to use, No-Nonsense Nurture. It is a non-scripted tool that includes positive narration, relationship building, extremely important, precise directions, incentive and consequence plan. Along with No-Nonsense Nurture, schools also have the autonomy to use other tools to support classroom management and improve student behavior. Teach Like a Champion, using the techniques, implementing the techniques from Teach Like a Champion. The Get Better Faster Guide. PBIS, Positive Behavior Intervention Support Strategies. First Days of School by Harry Wong. Leader in Me. Toolbox. There are a lot others that schools could use. Can we just name a few? Three critical areas that foster positive student behaviors. We know that safety is very important in our schools. School-related activities where students are safe from violence, bullying, harassment. Schools, all schools, we will continue to focus on decreasing exclusionary practices as Dr. Johnson just mentioned. Environment, appropriate facilities, well-managed classrooms, available school-based health supports, and a clear and fair discipline policy that focuses on restorative practices. Last but not least, engagement. We believe strong relationships between students, teachers, families, and schools, and strong connection between schools and the broader community utilizing social-emotional learning strategies are very important. This is critical work. This work is not easy. It's a lot of relationship building, a lot of learning that takes place. Student accountability and consequences. When we're talking about the four-hour process, this is just a simple guide that helps us work through very complicated situations. School leaders and myself, my department, we review what happened. We take time to not only review what happened, then we work our way toward who's responsible? How do we leverage accountability? How do we identify the level of accountability based on that particular infraction? Then we work our way toward the reconcile. We learn from the mistakes. We find ways to come back together and evolve back into the school community. We restore. We try to acknowledge what we did that offended the other person, offended the classroom of individuals. So this is just a model that we try to rely on to help us guide through some of our situations that we experience. This is a snapshot year-to-date, 2017, 18, where we are right now in terms of suspensions. Overall days suspended, you'll have 14,607, slightly up, over 1,000 from last year, year-to-date. But we have, we are, we have decreased in the number of suspensions, which is 2,984. And then you can see in comparison to 2015, 16, year-to-date.
Dr. Wallace?
Yes?
Just want to interject here, just to be absolutely clear with everyone. Hopefully, folks are hearing this and I just want to underscore, we are, we are clear that there are plenty incidents in which students behave in ways that demand a really strong statement, a really strong reaction, whatever it might be. And plenty times, as this data shows, we're talking suspensions here. we're talking suspensions here, and long-term suspensions. We're very clear on that point and want to, we certainly don't want to send mixed messages to students, but what we said earlier and continue to say is the suspensions, the consequences, along with our jobs as educators, we've got to keep both of those in full view. And so this data shows, obviously, we are suspending. We continue to suspend. And at least in this year, you see this uptick of the number of days and perhaps, and lowered number of unique suspensions, which shows that while we're trying to use a broader array of responses, there are plenty of times when students, when the response to student behaviors, especially at the higher levels, those 300s and 400 level infractions, require, in our view, a suspension.
Thank you, Dr. Green. And now we're going to hear from our courageous school leaders. I will call out their name, and as I call your name, you want to make your way to the front where I am. We're going to start with Principal Lynette Dixon, McKinley Elementary School. We also have Principal Brian Gibson, Mitchell Elementary School. Principal Katie Jimenez from McClure Elementary School. Those are from our, these are leaders from our elementary sites. We have secondary leaders, Principal Jason Gilley, Central Junior High School. Principal Jody Parsons, Hale Junior High School. And last but very much not least, we have Dr. Michelle Butler, who's leading TOS Met Junior and High School. Who also learned that it's celebrating her 27th birthday tomorrow. So I thought I'd break the ice with that, Dr. Butler, on your dime. Thank you. Now we're going to hear from our school leaders.
Thank you, Dr. Wallace.
Yeah, thank you.
Some principals need to take charge. He's going first.
Dr. Gess, the President, members of the board. First of all, thank you for the opportunity tonight.
Thank you. You can just your microphone. We're having some difficulty.
Is it better?
Yes, thank you.
First, I just have to say, my teachers work hard every day, and that has really been the biggest tool in my pocket for my students. Just with their building relationships and making sure that our students are safe every day. And we endeavor every day to assist our students step foot on the school grounds that they are safe from the time they're with us until they leave. On suspensions, we only really use suspensions when it's a safety matter. It has to be a fight or in some opportunity that the students are not safe anymore to protect them. This year, most of our incidences have been levels one and two. Nothing super major, but after just reflecting upon those and identifying some trends, we created a special group for six young gentlemen that we're just calling the Gentlemen's Group. We made them an invitation. They had to accept it. And starting next Monday, they're going to be in a classroom with myself. And we're going to start working on seven habits to make them into leaders in the school. So we're hoping to take some of those attributes of those students that they've used inside the classrooms that have had a negative impact and turn it around into a positive impact. As a principal, I definitely feel I have the autonomy to suspend when I need to. Dr. Johnson and Dr. Wallace's offices have been very supportive anytime I've called and I've had a question as a new leader about a suspension. And when it comes to mindset and cultures, there's definitely been a change from consequence to restoration. And this has just been a great benefit to our students because now we're helping students learn how to problem solve, teach forgiveness, and how to remediate situations themselves. Thank you for your time.
Good evening. At McClure Elementary, I've been honored to serve for the past five years as the principal.
Good morning.
Excuse me?
Good morning.
Yes, that's right. I just want to make a very clear statement that we believe that students belong in school. And we work really hard to keep kids in school. We look for mindsets in educators that we hire to join our staff that believe that parents bring us their best. And we are charged with caring for that. Unfortunately, sometimes that means that school is not the safest place for an individual student. But that's not often, and that's not for something like skipping class. I would even say it's not even for fighting because honestly, if two kids are really mad at each other, that's the perfect breeding ground for a sort of conversation. If teachers are assaulted, which may sound really harsh coming from an elementary school, but it happens at times. Sometimes it happens with intent, and sometimes it doesn't. But looking at individual circumstances, working with families, sometimes families need time to connect with a physician. They need time to make a plan for their child's safety at school and how their child can be the safe person at school and not cause harm to others. Sometimes we need time to create a safe plan for students because immediately re-entering them back into the classroom does not set them up to succeed and then could further damage relationships and cause them to be out of school even longer. As principal, I have to go to bed at night with the knowledge that sometimes I contribute to children of color being suspended at a higher rate than students of other ethnicities, and that's a hard pill to swallow. But we're fighting really hard to provide a social-emotional climate that supports all students. We think it's really important that teachers also understand that their job is to come teach and to love kids, and it's not to get hurt. And it's a really hard balance to find in supporting teachers and taking a strong stand of what their role is and then also supporting individual students that are just beginning their journey as little ones, as young scholars, into what it means to be able to have control over themselves and maximize their own personal resources. We are committed to students, but we do use the autonomy we have to sometimes take a break from school if it's needed, but always with the goal of coming back as soon as possible. We'd also like to mention that we've chosen to use federal money to provide an academic engagement teacher for our site, not as a suspension room, but sometimes students are there for 20 minutes. Sometimes in that exclusionary environment is where they are able to process this restorative conversation that they're going to have with their peers, ready to come back. So interventions do not always mean punishment, but we're looking to teach so students can become better human beings. Thank you.
Dr. Gess, President of the Board, Board Members, Lynette Dixon, McKinley Elementary Principal. We've shared a quick PowerPoint, and I'm going to give you some information on the data that we have at McKinley. I also have a teacher that was hired late in the year. They took over a class that was very difficult. And she's going to talk with you about the growth that she's made with her students, as well as something that she has implemented in her class. So truly at McKinley, we believe every day is a new day for students. We've worked with our staff with No-Nonsense Nurture, and you'll see the data on our suspension rates at this time. We've gone from 67 suspensions in the year 14, 15, to eight at this time, and we, as a staff, had to do a mind shift. It wasn't about excluding students. Like you've heard before, when we say fight, is it truly a fight? Because again, students become friends right after the fights. And when we look at the data, it concerned me as well that more of the students of color were being suspended, and those were students in my school. What we've done at the beginning of the school year, prior to school starting, all of our teachers went through No-Nonsense Nurture. We all have certificates posted, and the staff modeled the expectations prior to school. We did role-playing during our staff meetings. If you look at this data here, it shows in August, we started with routines and procedures. All of our classrooms did not have the routines and procedures in place. But by September, we had 72% of the classes with those routines in place. And as we had school visits, we were up to 81%. And after October, we were at 90% of our students had those routines in place. So this is some of, these are some of the things that we've worked on throughout the year with the positive narration focusing on what you see students doing well and not nagging students. In the old days, there was nagging, get your book out, turn around, stop talking. We're focusing on all the things that we're seeing students do well at McKinley. Also, some of the things that we are definitely committed to is, you've heard that before, but truly building a relationship with the families. It definitely takes an entire community, not just the staff inside of the school, but bringing families inside of the schools. We've tried daily having active conversations with our students. Students now are choosing to have lunch with myself as well as the Assistant Principal on a daily basis. We've provided lunch buddies. Mr. Bright, he's on our campus weekly, and he sits down at lunch having conversations with students that we've selected, and then they select to go to him on their own at this time. We have student leaders. The student leaders are mentors to the other younger students, and they serve on our pride committee. We did look at our discipline policy, and we do have a discipline committee at McKinley where teachers have input on what are the things that we need to do to support the students and teachers. It's not just my thoughts and not just the administration's thoughts. So we do have positive contact with the parents. We want to do this before we've ever called them to say, hey, we need you to come up and shadow today. All teachers are required to have that first call, a successful call, what the strengths of the students are. We do regular check-ins with our counselor and our social worker, who was out at this time. I needed to hire another one, but we had a social worker, as well as day screens is on our site, and we meet with them as well to create success plans as well as check in on our students. So this is just some of our referral data that's on the data dashboard. And you see the largest amount of referrals come from disruptive conduct in class. We've also looked deeper at the data, and most of the disruptive conduct are referrals we've received from 4th grade, which has had a turnover in staff. So we're still having to rebuild that culture at this time. So again, something that we do at McKinley, teachers are the first contact prior to students leaving the classroom. They do a buddy system. We're going to have the sixth grade teachers speak quickly on that. We do have the restorative conversations. We have the social worker and the counselor basically.
Good evening. My name is Janet Smith, and I am privileged to be at McKinley Elementary. Go Eagles! 6th grade, I'm 6th grade ELA and social studies teacher. And when I arrived at McKinley, let me first say that we have some great scholars. We really do, awesome potential. We have awesome, I was going to say president, but principal and vice-principal and staff, and everyone is approachable. There's so much support, so it makes our jobs as teachers a lot easier. When I first came to McKinley, the students were kind of without a teacher, kind of in-between. So they were used to kind of doing their own thing, you know, there for a while, pretty rowdy. And so I wondered how coming in as a new teacher, you know, to them, you know, them being used to being with someone else and then coming in kind of at the middle of the, actually at the end of the nine, first nine weeks, how they would be receptive, you know, what was going to be my plan. But anyway, we got in there, and we've had a major turnaround. A lot of the students, you know, they come to school, they're at home, they're the leaders at home. Some of them are the parents at home. They're the big brothers, they're the big sisters, they're responsible for doing this and that. So coming to school and having to comply with someone telling them what to do, that was a big challenge that I found with the 6th graders. And so one of the things that I did was starting to give them leadership roles. We, by taking some of them, and they go to read and tutor some of the younger grades. I have a couple that actually entered the ML King, Martin Luther King Jr. Essay and Art Contest, and they both finished third. One finished third in art and one in essay. I'll say that back to them. The one that finished the essay, he was one of the ringleaders of the, we're not going to do anything. And, you know, gradually to see his progression, to even have the confidence to enter an essay contest where writing, where English is not his first language, and to finish third is a major accomplishment for him. I was excited to see that. So it shows the potential of the students that we have, which brings us to, I heard a lot of the things that were said earlier before we came up here. And it is so correct. We have a lot of students that don't necessarily need a referral. You know, they have a lot of other issues going on, but every student deserves to have, you know, a peaceful environment, uninterrupted, to learn. And so if that student is causing a disruption, then it has to be dealt with. But I don't necessarily think, and we don't necessarily think, that all of those are a blanket referral. So the proposal that I submitted to Ms. Dixon, and let me say she was very supportive of it and gung-ho and ready to go with it, was an in-house suspension. I can do lunch detention, but that's not the same thing. That's just for a certain period of time, with 30, 40 minutes, what they have for lunch and recess. But to actually have a dedicated space where they have that consequence, but it's not just a consequence, it's also a venue where they can vent and actually have an opportunity to talk about what's going on, where they might not have that opportunity in class. It also gives them that time to rethink what they're doing, to rethink their actions, and come up with a better solution, you know, where they have some conversation about a life skill choice, or better choices, or how to make better choices. But they're still responsible for their work. They're still responsible for their assignments. So it's a plan that I presented, and I've tried it in my class just with lunch detention and also using the buddy-teacher system. The first time I used it, I have to say, there was so much peace in the class that morning. So we were so productive because it's just a core group of students. And if those core group of students are linked together, you know, they're strengthened number. So the in-house detention kind of breaks up that strength-in-numbers approach to misconduct. And so that's what our presentation is. Thank you.
She didn't share that she also took the opportunity to meet with her students after school. So she was able to build those relationships with her students by just staying a little bit after school with them and giving them some extra attention. So some of the other things that we do, the students' shadow, myself, and administration if we need for them to. We do reverse suspension, which has worked well at McKinley, but I know all parents cannot come to school with students. So if a parent is unable to come and shadow, and that's another part of building a relationship, having the parents in the school and seeing our expectation. But if parents are not able to come, the students also shadow us. We've referred students to child study. We've had support from the behavior coaches at the district level, as well as Dr. Wallace being on campus. being on campus. Out of the five hundred and fifty students we have at McKinley, only one student has been referred to Project Accept, which is an alternative school, and he has been in child study for over the last two years. We've met with the family. Mom has been on board as well as the outside counseling. So we did everything we could to support him on campus and we're looking forward to him coming back after his needs get met at Project Accept. So we do take suspension very seriously at McKinley. We do want students on our campus and we know if they're not there, we can't teach and they won't learn. Thank you.
Good evening, Madam President, Dr. Gibson, board members. I'm Principal Gilley. I am the building leader at Central Junior High and Central High School. I have with me, to my left, Coach Tammy Altapra. She is a U.S. history teacher and she's also our varsity track coach and our athletic director. I also have with me Ms. Marilyn Leach. She's our, one of our junior high spin teachers and also our varsity cheer coach. I've had the honor and privilege to serve, to serve the most resilient young people in the city of Tulsa during my ten years of service, which is split between McLean Junior High and High School and Central Junior High and High School. Both communities face challenging realities every day. A large some of these challenges can be attributed to a disproportionate amount of opportunities for economic growth in the area of North Tulsa. Many of my students have been in situations that would bring the largest man in this room down to his knees in defeat. It was Martin Luther King who said, "If you can't fly, then run. If you can't run, then walk. If you can't walk, then crawl, but whatever you do, you have to keep moving forward." Through many difficult circumstances, all of which are out of their control, these students continue to move forward and towards the right path of educational opportunities. When they enter the doors of 3101 West Edison Street, many come with baggage, trauma even. But what they all come with is hope. Today, I want to speak to you about how we inspire growth and student behavior through discipline and effective and healthy approaches. The Webster Dictionary defines discipline as "the training that corrects, molds, or perfects the mental faculties or moral character." I am a champion of young people. If it is in their best interest, I'm for it. If they will benefit from it and become more productive scholars and citizens, I will endorse it every time. I'm blessed to work with teachers such as Coach Altapra and Ms. Leach, who share the same passion for young people. We have a number of interventions that aid in correcting behaviors and build stronger sense of self-awareness, self-management, two of the five core focuses from social and emotional learning spectrum that we have focused on as a staff this year. Besides our classroom conversations and practices, some of these interventions include our onsite therapeutic partnership with a new way where students work on coping skills, restorative meeting, meetings involving students, parents, teachers and administrators, trace intervention where students are stationed in a room to complete work and also to reflect on their actions, opportunities for one-on-one restorative conversations, which could look like a teacher and a student stepping into the hallway to have a private conversation, or even two or more students in an office conducting a restorative practice amongst each other. I've had several students who will come to me and say, "Mr. Gilley, we're having an issue. Do you have a place where we can talk?" The fact that they even do that, they have the respect, they have the, not only respect for, for me, but themselves and the courage to say, "Hey, we need to handle this a proper way," speaks volumes about these young people. These interventions may be used for infractions such as skipping school inappropriate language or conversations, perceived signs of disrespect. I do want to emphasize perceived, or any tier-one level behavior found in the BRP. My stance on suspension is that it is more of a punishment than behavior modification, behavior modification tool. If overutilized, it tends to disenfranchise and removes the hope that these kids come to school with. As I said before, I'm a champion of young people and with that being said, I will always prioritize the safety of every student and adult that is involved in the process of molding young minds. If a student partakes in a physical altercation or if a student has exhibit behaviors that could threaten the safety of even a single individual at the school, that student will face a suspension and will partake in a restorative intake process upon return and oftentimes a behavior plan to ensure we are taking steps forward. The process is a little bit different than elementary school, as many of my kids are standing, staring at me eye to eye for where the clothes that I wear. So we do have to take a different approach. The other call for suspension is when students refuses to take advantage of all forms of interventions that we have offered. Due to our proactive approach and interventions, we are attracted to cut suspension infractions due to altercations by sixty percent from the previous year. My ILD, Mr. Robert Shortick, has always been supportive of every decision I have made and served as a thought partner several times with his knowledge of the role of a principal through his real-life experiences. I've only been supported in my role as a principal and as an assistant principal in the area of building-wide, in the area of building-wide discipline decisions. I have not only been blessed to work with teachers who are champions of students, but district leaders as well. The approach Central takes as a collective whole to changing student lives is not limited to academics. The restorative approach that we take as a family to hold young people accountable has created a welcoming, caring environment that will be reflected throughout the community. At this time, I do believe that Ms. Leach has a few words to share with you.
Hi, everyone. Thank you for a few listening here, Ms. President and Dr. Gibson. This is my first year as a teacher. I have been, well, I was a para for about four years at Central and, like, I have this, I get suspended or I get sent back to class every day because apparently I look like one of the students. So the kids feel the same way and we just have this relationship that I really can't explain. And being a first-year teacher, it is somewhat scary. I find myself kind of like, ooh, will I be able to do this? Like, I, I can't tell anybody that I know what to do in this case because I'm new. But the best thing ever is that this principal has been so supportive of my relationship building with students. For instance, I have a student in my advisory class who got into an altercation verbally with students and then it turned into teachers and he just was kind of wilding out on everybody. And I was able to go to my, my principal and say, "Um, I know this kid. Let me, let me talk to him for a second, you know, and then let me get back and just, you know, figure out what you guys are going to do." And the fact that our principal and his boss and his boss's bosses give us as teachers that type of support to build those relationships, that young man just needed someone to talk to. He didn't need to go home because we learned him and we know him, no one is really there. So to suspend him for this would be to send him to an empty home where there is no one talking to him, where there is no one. The reason he is so angry is because no one is speaking to him. And for them to give us that opportunity, especially me as a first-year teacher, to build that relationship, the only thing that I have done is strengthened in this young man that there are people, there are adults who are willing to listen to you. It's not hard to do as a teacher, just be a human to another human. This human just happens to be smaller than me or younger than me, but this is not hard to do. If you are just human, instead of the teacher or the disciplinarian, if you are just human, these kids will open up in ways you had no idea. You can see the angriest child becomes so gentle and so ready and willing to learn. These kids could skip and never come, but they come to our building every day because they know it's Central. We have built a family and we want them to be there. We want them to be there more than we want them to be anywhere else and they know that we will take the time to find out what's going on with them, to keep them there. If it takes a village, we definitely should be part of it. And I don't think that sending them back home is what the village leaders should be doing if they want to help us, you know, build. So I am very appreciative of the fact that Mr. Gilley allows us to be humans to our tiny humans and we're making better big humans.
Good evening. Privileged to serve as a principal at Hale Junior High. It's my fifteenth year in service at Tulsa Public Schools and I believe passionately in the work that we do here. At Hale Junior High, suspensions fall into one of two categories, a final intervention after a series of scaffold steps or an intervention used to ensure safety for students and staff. There are some non-negotiables for us when you get into the secondary environment, you have to draw a line. We attempt to curb discipline incidents by the following. One, common classroom procedures and consequences. We've worked with our teachers and developed a system that everybody could agree on and post in their room. So the students have the same expectation when they go from class to class. It takes out a lot of the guesswork about what I can get away with in your class and what I could get away with in the next class. Another thing we've begun to do is track all student behavior and incidents and scaffold consequences and interventions. We've had to double down on how we track student behavior. The reason being, if the dean talks to a student, then they talk to the counselor, then they talk to the assistant principal, they talk to me, and nobody knows who's talking to who, then we don't know where we are in our continuum of discipline procedures. We've also begun to scaffold consequences. We looked at the most common referrals we had over a period of time and came up with scaffold responses to those things. For instance, being tardy has a scaffolded response, first tardy, second tardy, third tardy, fourth tardy, and so on. We also have a group of teachers that are willing to try new things. One of the interventions we have is a lunch detention. And any teacher can assign a lunch detention, that teacher just has to be willing to volunteer for lunch detention. And the more teachers have volunteered to sit for lunch detention, the fewer times a month they have to do it. And, and to say how much I believe in this, I volunteer for lunch detention typically on Fridays to give teachers that time back. That has worked very well. Another thing we've been able to do is Saturday school. And we use this in two ways, tutoring and discipline. Our dean and our behavior coach show up off the clock for free to have Saturday school for discipline reasons. We also have an academic intervention that's voluntary and the parents love. Let's hear this kid a D or an F. Well, the kids that are there for disciplinary reasons say, "What are they doing?" "Oh, those, those students are here for tutoring." "Oh." "Well, can I do that?" "Yeah, go on over there." And so then we've tricked them into getting tutoring that they need, which obviously they need or they wouldn't be there in the first place. We have restorative conferences. I was in one this week where two girls went across the table at each other and I thought, Gloria, if she gets a hold of her hair, this is over. Because you cannot get a girl to let go of the other girl's hair. If that happens, you're done. And we took a break and we came back to it. Nobody got a hold of anybody's hair. That's messy and that takes a lot of time. It took all afternoon. Fill your calendar if you want to do restorative conferences because they're messy and the deeper you go, the messier they get, but we believe in it. Of course, parents' conferences and trace, all of these have a reflective element. If you go to lunch detention, you're filling out a behavior reflection form. If you go to trace, you're filling out a behavior reflection form and we're sharing those with teachers and parents. Our most effective intervention so far has been the implementation of a suspension reentry conversation. In my first year as principal at Hale Junior High, a student would come back from suspension, the dean would come out and say, "Hey, you're going to be better." The kids say, "Yeah, I'm going to be better." "All right, go get them." And guess what? The kid wasn't better. And so now when your parent picks you up, if you are suspended, you immediately schedule a reentry conversation. As a matter of fact, if you have a five-day suspension, we'll not get down to four if you'll come at nine o'clock. We're parents like that too. And so then we have a support team in place, we have a success plan in place that has regular check-ins as well for students. That's been the most effective thing we've done. I do have the autonomy to suspend students. I've never been told not to suspend, nor have I had a suspension revoked. As much as possible, we try and identify the root cause of student behavior. And I echo what I've heard Principal Tracy Thompson at Anderson say, "You can't suspend a student to good behavior. You also can't write me enough speeding tickets that I will go the speed limit." Think about it. In most cases, suspension is a final intervention. At Hale Junior High, in the fifteen, sixteen school year, we had five hundred and thirty, five hundred and thirty-nine suspensions. We had essentially trace and suspension. Those were the interventions. The second year I was there, in the sixteen, seventeen school year, we had two hundred and eighty-five suspensions by beginning to implement some of these simple things. And this year, so far, we've had a hundred and twenty suspensions. We've changed our mindset, we've changed our method and we've changed our way of doing business. What you have to think about in a suspension is how you bookend it. Did you support the student before and how are you supporting the student after? If you have those things in place, a suspension can be an effective intervention. And if you do not have those things in place, you will not suspend a student to good behavior. And I still believe you won't suspend a student to good behavior, but you can bookend a student to good behavior by providing the necessary support. Thank you.
Okay, so one of the things I learned from a behavior coach is you can't ask a bunch of kids to sit for hours on end and not expect them to misbehave. And as I look out over you, I feel the same way about you. So if you need to stand, go ahead and stand. I'm good. Good evening, Superintendent Gibson, school board members and guests. My name is Dr. Michelle Butler. I have worked for Tulsa Public Schools for the last twenty-three years as a teacher, discipline dean, assistant principal, and now as the principal of Tulsa Met Junior High and High School, which is the alternative program for TPS. I have two children who are proud graduates of TPS schools and I have lived in the midtown area in Miss Fate's feeder district for the last twenty-five years. I guess I can say I'm invested in this school district in many ways. I care deeply for it and the students we serve. I choose to work in this district, I choose to go to work every day and I choose to care about these kids. As a TPS administrator, I was asked to speak to you today about my experiences with student discipline, in particular, student suspensions. I can tell you that I am one of the proud original authors of the BRP. When we wrote it many years ago, I was at the table when it first originated. To put it simply, I can tell you I don't believe suspensions accomplish much, if anything, in terms of changing student behavior. In truth, I think this discipline consequence actually exacerbates the problem and also may lead to academic challenges for those students. Giving students what amounts to a free day or two off doesn't actually feel like punishment for most of these children, especially those who may already be hostile towards school to begin with. Times are not like they were years ago when I was in school and getting suspended meant consequences at home. I surely didn't want you to call my mom. That is not the case anymore. Often, out-of-school suspensions lead kids at home unsupervised and able to cause more problems. They also do nothing to teach appropriate alternative behaviors nor address the underlying issues that may be causing the bad behavior. Many times, we are sending students home where they learned the inappropriate behaviors we see in the classroom. I often cite the example of a student who uses profanity towards a teacher. I call the parent, the parent comes in, they tell me, "Oh, we don't allow that kind of language in our home," and then proceeds to use a profane tirade like I've never seen at their child. That has happened more times than I care to count. If the student misses schoolwork, his or her grades will decline, further increasing the student's detachment from the academic environment. In essence, by suspending the student, we are detaching them from the education that we want them to get. I understand that suspensions are sometimes necessary. It is tempting to remove misbehaving students from the school to preserve the educational opportunities for others. Suspensions also give teachers a break from trying students. I get it. I was a teacher, I get it. But this should be done as a very last resort. Suspensions are not a cure-all. I can honestly say I've never been asked to not suspend a student by my boss or any other administrator in this district. I have the autonomy to suspend if I so choose. What I happen to ask to do is to reduce the percentage of unique suspensions in my building. And at Tulsa Met, as a staff, we have set a goal to reduce our unique suspensions by thirty percent. thirty percent this year. How do we plan to do that? At Tulsa Met, we do that by working with students and the resources we have available to change their behavior so they can achieve academically. These resources include providing in-house therapy. We gave up a classroom so that day springs would have offices in our building, so that when students misbehave, you can take them straight from where they are to the therapist. Because we found most often, because therapeutic services in this city are so minimal for students, you would say to the student, "Hey, you know, when you have your appointment in three weeks, could you remember to tell your therapist how you feel right now and how you behaved?" Was completely ineffective. But taking the student straight to the day spring counselor solved tons of problems and allowed us to not suspend. We also provide escape routes for students to a trusted adult. We tell students, "If you're having an issue, if you're having anxiety, if you feel bad about yourself, get up and walk out of class." We have teachers in the hall, we have security guards in the hall, we have people that you can go directly to. I personally, as the administrator, will deal with you walking out of class. I want them to deal with your anxiety, and that way we don't have a scene in the room and the room stays a wonderful atmosphere for students to learn why we deal with whatever it is that this student has. We call those things escape routes, and they're available to every student in our building. We provide counselors, behavior coaches, social workers, team staff in conferences, life skill classes, parent conferences, tracking sheets, placement and alternative programs, et cetera. At Tulsa Met, we pull out all the stops to work with children to change their behavior before they reach the point of needing to be suspended. Basically, we use a team approach, a family approach, to address children where they are and then point them in the right direction. Are we always successful? No. We still have to suspend some children. But we see, we are seeing incredible individual successes and behavior changes in children who have previously been major disruptions in Tulsa Met classrooms. And students who are suspended come back to Tulsa Met through a conference with their parents, therapists, and counselors. They're not just dropped in the classroom. Let me end with a personal note, with a request for more resources to help us deal with children who need behavior support. The need for additional funding is always there. We don't have enough resources at the ready to deal with the trauma and the problems that some of our children deal with daily. Services for children need to be discussed regularly and planned for on a reoccurring basis. There just isn't enough available today to meet the great needs of our students. We need to find the money from our foundations, other donors, and our legislature to provide the support these students need to be not only academically successful, but also successful in life. Thank you for your time.
Dr. Gist, President Schaller, and the board. Just want to thank all of the school leaders who joined us for commentary this evening, also to Dr. Johnson and Wallace for leading us through this conversation. We hear a lot about what is or isn't happening in schools, lots of perspectives about what should or shouldn't be done to address behavior. And so we wanted to bring to you perspectives from our school leaders and insights from them as they're in the work every day with their teams. So again, just thank you for the time invested in this conversation.
Thank you, Dr. Green, and Dr. Johnson, and Dr. Wallace, and all of our school leaders and teachers. You know, when we created the Office of Student and Family Support Services in 2015, and when we began this body of work, we did it because we heard from teachers and principals that we had really significant needs to support student success in classrooms and to support behavior and improve student engagement. It was a response to student concern, to teacher concerns about student need. We knew that we needed to provide more tools and resources for teachers and school leaders to help to engage students more effectively. We did not and are not implementing a one-size-fits-all solution, and you can see that there are real differences. While there are some commonalities, there are real differences from building to building. What I can tell you is that we are not there yet. We know that we have a lot more growth to make, we have a lot more need to make sure that teachers in every building are supported and that our students are successful and engaged, and we have more work to do, and we do have a need for resources, as Dr. Butler said. But we're grateful for the hard work of these individuals and so many others who aren't here tonight, and appreciate the opportunity to spend some time talking about this body of work, Madam President, board members, and those joining. Thank you, and that concludes our staff presentation.
It's such a big shift that the district's been making, and I've been hearing about it too as a board member that I felt I wanted to add a little bit. So I really appreciated hearing the positive stories tonight. I think they're very helpful, because in a lot of my listening, I'll be honest, I've heard not-so-positive stories, and specifically usually behalf of teachers who, if a kid is being disruptive and they are asked to leave the class, they're coming back very quickly with not very good attitudes, and they're not being sincere. And so for teachers, at least some of them that I'm hearing from, and so we have to figure out how large all the different groups are, but I just think this, on the last page, twenty-three, we didn't see that bullet point, and it's super-duper important, so I'm calling to it right now. And it says that we need to continue to listen to teachers, to understand what works, what doesn't work, and how we can support them. And so that's really important as we make this shift.
Thank you, Dr. Decker. I look forward to discussing this presentation more in leadership as well. There's a couple of questions I have, but in the interest of time, let's move on. We're going to move to board member reports and concerns. Quickly, for those of you who were here earlier, we swore in the two new board members who, myself, I didn't have an opponent, but you still get re-s sworn in, and to swear to uphold the laws of the state of Oklahoma and the Constitution of the United States, and my fellow board member, Dr. Keller, who did have an opponent, she was also formally sworn in this evening. And by law, as soon as that happens, we have to reorganize the board, and what that means is that we have to elect officers to the board. And I am grateful to the board who nominated and voted for me to serve as president for another year until we have another election and a reorganization of the board. It's an honor to serve as president of Tulsa Public School Board. It's definitely extra duty, but it's really a great growth experience if you ever have the opportunity, anyone else.
I think Ms. Faith can speak to that. She served in this role, but it really, what it looks like on a day-to-day basis is you are meeting with the superintendent along with the vice president at least once a week, if not more, and duties that are, you frequently are called to talk about urgent situations, and you may help communicate that to other board members. You're constantly thinking about the issues of the district as sort of the head of the board and helping the board be aware, stay on top of things. And so it truly is a growth experience for me, and I'm very honored that the board selected me again. And I'm sad to say that I won't be serving with Ms. Keller anymore. She's going to pursue her, continue to pursue her masters and think about her not-so-new baby anymore. It'll be a year soon, and Dr. Decker is going to take the role of the vice president. We're very grateful to have her, so thank you, Dr. Decker.
All board members, their votes equal and all equally accessible to you. I always like to tell people, even if you don't live in one of our districts, but you know a board member, feel free to contact them. I can say to a member, every single one of them will welcome your call and have that conversation with you. I know there may be some other board member reports. I just want to take a minute to pause and acknowledge the teachers and students who were killed in the shooting in Harton, Florida last week, and really all of those who have been killed in school shootings in the United States. I reference the United States because the phenomenon is unique to our country alone. No other country tolerates the risks we do when it comes to the safety of its people and certainly not its children. As a mother of four children who enter the public schools throughout Tulsa every day, I will continue to advocate for laws that protect them, their teachers, and our whole community. I know there are many debates about whether background checks or gun regulations or increased access to mental health services will change this horrible phenomenon, but I say, how can we not try? In the meantime, there are things that we can do right now to help keep our school kids safe, and those are just these two simple things. If you see something, say something. Seeing something means more than reporting a suspicious person walking around a school campus. It means reading something on social media. It means seeing something in written materials of a student or unfortunately maybe your own child. It means something, taking something that was verbalized seriously, or observing abnormal behavior. And saying something means telling someone live what you saw or heard or read, meaning making a phone call or telling someone in person. TPS does have a tip line, (918) 749-9966. And if you can't remember that, it's right on the TPS website on the landing page. But you can also tell a principal, the superintendent, a teacher, your school board member, but whomever you tell, ask them to follow up with you after the threat has been assessed so that you know that it has been communicated to appropriate people. As a community, we need to talk about see something, say something in age-appropriate ways with our children as well. And we also need to discuss with them that joking about any kind of school violence or making flippant or angry remarks regarding school safety is not permissible whatsoever. It's incumbent upon us in the community to have that conversation with our students. I've told my kids that they make such a poor choice, I will support whatever consequences the principal and the school administrators impose and double down on that at home. There's absolutely no tolerance for any kind of joking when it comes to school violence. Every threat must be taken seriously. As a mother, as a school board member, a human being, I imagine a future generation looking back on this era of mass killing in America and wondering why it went on so long, why so many young lives were senselessly wasted, and so many broken hearts left behind. I personally pledge to work to get us to that new era, but in the meantime, we have to say something when we see something and take school violence extremely seriously and communicate that it is never a casual matter to make threats regarding harming others or yourself. TPS, I know, will do everything it can to protect our students and teachers, but as parents and a community, we have to do our part as well. So I'm asking you, when you leave here, not to assume that your kids know about see something, say something, or that your neighbors or your church community knows that. You need to have that conversation with them, name it, call it out. And the same is true. I know my kid would never make a threat, I know they would never jump around about that. You need to have those conversations with our kids as well, very directly about the seriousness of it and the consequences that are going to happen if they do make those threats. They will be investigated, a police officer will come to your home, and it is a very serious matter. So we need to really purposely and intentionally have those conversations with our kids. And I thank you for indulging me in those remarks, but it's another thing that just cannot be left unsaid for this evening. Dr. Decker?
Yes, thank you.
Board member report.
Thank you, thank you. So for the past six weeks, the past six weeks have been very difficult at Edison, to say the least. We've all felt many emotions, including shock and anger and worry and confusion and sadness. It's been extremely trying for many here today and not here today. I've done a lot of listening, and that listening tells me that we need a laser-like focus on rebuilding trust and creating a climate of respect and appreciation. The district's strategic plan encompasses five strategies, and one of them, which we heard about tonight, is cultivating safe and supportive and joyful cultures. And when we as a board further talked about this strategy, it includes, included fostering a healthy, safe, and supportive working environment for teachers and staff. So in my brain, there has been a disconnect between what the board and the superintendent have laid down and printed word and what we're hearing about is happening at Edison. And so while this disconnect can be disturbing and upsetting, the good news to me is actually that that makes it very straightforward for us as a board to hold Dr. Gist accountable for improving climate. It's already written in our plan, and the board will do just that. I'm an Edison parent myself and an Edison alumni, and because of that, it's a top priority of mine that Edison gets back on track. And the time to recover is now. We must resuscitate our community, and it's not going to be easy. And just like Ms. Fear used the word tonight, grace, I chose grace in my remarks also. As we transition from Ms. Fear to Mr. Vineyard, let's offer grace, because rebuilding will not happen overnight. And let's offer grace, because as decisions are made, we won't all agree with all of them. Let's work together urgently to rebuild so our teachers have hope and our children are proud to call Edison their school. And as we move forward, I'm going to blitz you with some positive messages, and it's not an exhaustive list, so send me what I'm missing so I can call it out on another day. The Student Journal of Creative Expression, called The Erie, recently received an excellent rating, and I highly recommend it as a copy table book. The Junior ROTC is an honor unit with distinction. Edison recently won the African-American History Bowl Championship. Our Student Council has won for the tenth straight year the National Gold Council of Excellence Award. My daughter's in the band, so bear with me as I shamelessly plug her activities, but the Edison Screaming Eagles Marching Band earned a Superior Award in the regional contest. And the Winter Percussion won state last year, and this past weekend won first place in their competition. This past week, I had the pleasure of talking with the junior/senior leadership class, and this series of leadership courses is also very unique and original. And I had them on, hundreds of stickies write down the wonderful things that are going on at Edison, and anybody's welcome to look at these. And my favorite mentioned in there is that they themselves called out our diverse student pop body. And we are diverse at Edison. We're diverse in race and ethnicity, we're diverse in income, and we're diverse in academic abilities. And they also called out that everyone gets along. And it reminded me of one of my favorite stories told to me by a parent after the eighth-grade middle school dance. We're DJs. DJs see lots of middle school dances, remark to the parents that, "Wow, what a culturally diverse school you have here, and everybody's intermingling with one another. They're all getting along." And I'm so proud that Edison represents that. In sports, we just had seven student athletes recently sign letters of intent to play sports in college. And one of the best things, what about the Edison Palm Team? They're the state champions, and on Sunday, they placed second in Nationals. I also have to mention again, because we're so proud, we have the highest AP passing rate of any Tulsa Public High School. And I'm going to end that what we're most proud of at Edison is our teachers. We love our teachers. This is really corny, but I decided to do it anyway. To revive my own spirit, this morning, I started singing the Edison Fight Song. Hail, hail to Edison! And two sentences struck me that I'm going to close with them tonight. Our school will carry through to green and white, we will be true.
Other board member reports. We'll move to our citizen comments. Thank you all for being here. We are honored to have you, and I'll just remind you quickly that the, a lot of time, it's five minutes, there'll be a timer up there, and there's just a few things to remember in your remarks. You can't mention any kind of pending grievance with the district, and that means something that's filed. I know there's going to be a lot of positive, but I think there might be a few people complaining. But that just means like in the legal sense of a pending grievance or a pending student disciplinary action, and complaints against individual employees, or an employee or a pending employee complaint filed with the district or an outside agency. I think you all know and did a good job of respecting this last time, and for all of you that are new, if there's something, we'll all, I'll ask you to pause, but we didn't do that last time, so.
So I'm looking forward to hearing your comments. And tonight, we're going to begin with our first speaker, who is Hamilton Principal, Ms. Tara Carr, and some members of her team.
Good evening, friends. My name is Tara Carr and I get to serve the Hamilton Elementary Community as principal. And my goals tonight are to share with you things that we've learned, opportunities we've had, and to offer a counter narrative. For context, our school leverages No-Nonsense Nurturing as well as leverage leadership, which I think we commonly call it Relay. And it has led to outstanding success for our students. And by success, I mean academic success, school culture success, and equity. We have the highest OCCT performance, when they're still called that, in the 2015-16 school year in terms of growth in the entire city and metro area of Tulsa. We also increased our NWA MAP students, meaning their growth goals, by 37%. We are now three percentage points away from the national average, which was not the case three years ago. And No-Nonsense Nurturing and Relay directly impact whether or not our students are successful. So I brought our fifth grade MAP teacher, Ms. Fiss, and our ESS team lead, Ms. Hoon, to share with you about both of those programs. I've used No-Nonsense Nurturing as a high school teacher at Webster. I leveraged it as an assistant principal under the leadership of Principal Spear. And I now use it as a elementary principal in rooms of 280 children. And you can hear a pin drop because it makes us go faster so we can get to the classrooms faster. So rather than listen to me, we'll have Lauren, Ms. Fiss.
So as aforementioned, No-Nonsense Nurturing looks like consistent consequences, high expectations, and relationship building with students. It helps me manage my classroom and focus on my students with our learning rather than on behavior issues. It's essentially the floor of classroom management, but it's by no means the ceiling. So coming into teaching personally for me with a non-teaching background, without No-Nonsense Nurturing, I couldn't imagine running a classroom like that. It's helped transform my classroom positively by using those strategies suggested in No-Nonsense Nurturing.
Good evening, my name is Swan Hin and I am very honored to work at Hamilton Elementary. I have been in education in Tulsa for the past six years to support our most diverse learners. The past two months, I have had the opportunity to build my perspective and teacher toolkit. Two weekends ago, I got to travel with the Hamilton team to Philadelphia to dive into weekly data meetings with Relay. It allowed us time to analyze and think through systems that could push student learning by looking at teacher actions. I appreciate the training for the following reasons. One, the full day allowed us to immediately put things into place. That the replicable steps model to us could be implemented quickly instead of waffling in indecision or confusion. Be calendared out our action plan to move forward efficiently and purposefully. Two, a core component of the weekly data meetings starts with having the end in mind to set the high bar for both students and teachers alike. Relay pushes the breakdown standards by looking at what students need to know and how to show it. This allows us to make sure the skills and concepts are taught at its fullest, to its fullest extent. Three, the weekly data meetings are grounded in the fact that the observations only show so much of what is happening in classrooms while the data fills in the gaps. Going through data meetings inform us on what high leverage gaps we should push and reteach. This allows for accountability among the coaches and teachers to think through other strategies to reach all students. Philadelphia was a great use of my time and allows me to be both a better teacher and a better coach. Thank you.
And Ms. Hoon says it was a great use of her time, but she actually spent her entire weekend, as many teachers often do, to do great things for their scholars and their students. The teachers at Hamilton are leaders. It is their voice that drives our work forward. They make these programs not only come to life, but ensure that they live exponentially out in our building. And they are the reason that we've created an equitable, excellent opportunity for students to have a great education experience at Hamilton.
Our next speaker this evening is Ms. Rhonda Falconstein. And she plans to talk to us about how the ESC and teachers should work together on issues.
I thank you for allowing me this time tonight. I want to start tonight with a quote. As a classroom teacher, you really feel like the whole system is working against you. So instead of having the work that's happening at your school administration level or your district administration level, supporting what you're doing and making what you're trying to accomplish easier or more effective, it actually feels like those things are holding you back. And that is the complete opposite of the way our system ought to be working, end quote. I believe no truer words have ever been spoken. This quote is from Dr. Deborah Gist, January 2011. And she understood the importance of teachers in our classroom, the challenges they face, and most importantly, she was able to recognize that when administrators fail to support teachers' efforts, our students suffer. Tonight, I don't think it's fair to say we've all worked as a team. However, we all did work towards the same objective, improving the opportunity for our students to focus on learning. Dr. Gist has the responsibility to administer the resources she has available and seek improvements in every Tulsa public school. The school board was elected by Tulsa citizens to have authority and influence in the process and to expect actions and improvements throughout our school system. Finally, the parent, teacher, student organizations at every one of our schools should be vigilant and motivated and constantly look for the opportunities that need to be addressed to improve the classroom environment for our students. This whole process has been very demanding. It's been very demanding, it's been a huge challenge and will never be complete. Much work remains to improve the educational opportunities of every student in every Tulsa public school. Each of us should continue to challenge the other to find the best balance of personnel, resources, and methods that strengthen our schools and not disadvantage our students. We must recognize that there are not one-size-fits-all solutions and that top-down directives from the ESC are not the answer. Solutions must be tailored for the unique needs of each school community. And principals must be empowered to implement practices that make sense for the teachers and students. If restorative practices or conversations are going to be an integral part of a discipline system, then the district and principals in each building must ensure there's adequate staff responsible for student discipline and backing up of our teachers. To paraphrase Dr. Gist, we need the whole system working together to support our classroom teachers. Thank you.
Our next speaker this evening is Ms. Isabel Tillman. And she will discuss the Edison student environment. Ms. Tillman here?
Most of the students are not here because of their topic.
Understand. We will keep moving and I'll call them and if they're not here, you just kind of wave to me. Ms. Kate Pharaoh, okay, Ms. Julia Manapella, Ms. Sally Winter, Ms. Megan Milburn, Mr. Zachary Heinrichs, Ms. Symphony Sims. Mr. Dale Bright is here. He is going to share with us a presentation and comments regarding McLean Junior High and the Seventh Grade Academy.
This evening, I have a letter signed by fourteen educators, attorney, consultants, and we are of one voice. That one voice is united in keeping the McLean Seventh Grade Center off the McLean High School campus. We insist that both the McLean Eighth Graders and Seventh Graders relocated at Alcott as the best option for meeting the academic and social development, mental needs of both grades. Now, in 2011, product schoolhouse, McLean parents and families said that they did not want their children in the same building with high schools. They followed that ears. The district did what it wanted to do. School got over prowling, the junior high had to send the seventh graders to Alcott. TPS's data and statistics indicate since the inception of both the Seventh Grade Academy and the Junior High School, that none of those students really, the vast majority, struggled mightily to reach their potential, regardless of the best intentions of principals and teachers. As we see, the community patrons, leaders, and families have perennially asked, asked that we must be involved in the education of our children. But the superintendents and the boards, it's to no avail. Your actions and solutions have only been rhetoric about equity and strategic engagement, both have fallen woefully short of meeting our children's academic needs and social needs. There must be a total separation of the buildings. That eighth and seventh grade must go to a separate building. We feel the social and emotional developmental developments, excuse me, of the seventh and eighth grade students make them vulnerable to the influence of the older high school students. And we feel that the high probability of encountering those older students on campus going to and from school and after school events. We cannot have our children in that kind of circumstance. And it's not that we think that there's something terribly wrong with that, but we think that their emotional and social development will be impeded. We also would like to put out that the first option that we have is Alcott. We would like to see the same remodeling at Alcott that happened at Emerson. Eight million dollars remodeling. We would like to see Alcott have a gymnasium, auditorium, media center, library, lunchroom, and the same remodeling monies that was afforded to Montessori. We need a vision for that school. That school has been just languishing in a just low performance and mediocrity and the district has done nothing. I've been there five years, nothing. The resources were lacking, where are they? What was happening when the enrollment dropped 35%? What did the district do? Nothing. We say, look, we have the opportunity here to make that school one of the best schools, a junior high schools, in Tulsa, Oklahoma. With a compelling vision, a future picture, a desire in mind, the right resources, it can happen. Dr. Gist, you say my heart aches knowing that Tulsa Public Schools has not fulfilled the promise of equal access to an excellent education in North Tulsa. Here's your opportunity. I know that your trust in the district, this is a letter you wrote, an open letter you wrote to the McLean community. I know that your trust, if there were a knife, in the district needs to be rebuilt. And I'm ready and willing to do what it takes to get there. I look forward to doing that work alongside teachers. Those are excerpts. You've got to walk the talk. You've got to walk the talk.
And I would like to say that it was horrible how you treated the Navy Marshal keeping her on the outside of every step of what was going on with that Seventh Grade Center. You disenfranchised people in her areas. She did not perform her duties as described by law.
Mr. Bright, your time is up. Thank you. Invite Ms. Virginia Ayers to speak. She will be speaking regarding Principal Spears. Pardon me? The mic is off because I don't think we have a, you have to sign up to speak in advance. On the same subject, every individual has to sign up in advance if the matter is not on the agenda. Thank you. Ms. Ayers. Move on to Mr. McAfee. Mr. Matt McAfee, who will speak to Edison, prep, and TPS climates.
Before I begin, I'd like to say thank you to Dr. Gist and the school board. It has been a long walk and it is certainly not finished. But I would be remiss if I did not say thank you for listening to us and thank you for acting. I had a different speech prepared and I considered not speaking tonight. But anyone who knows me realizes that I would never actually do that. To begin, I'd like to share a bit about why I teach at Edison. Before I was around, my father was a student at McLean. My father was a student there and he, like myself, caused a little too much trouble in school. The last time he was in the principal's office, though, he had a conversation that I find very regrettable. It was this conversation with McLean's school leader at the time encouraged this troubled student to end his education by dropping out of school. It was simply going to be better for him to leave school. My father never graduated from McLean High School. He never attended another high school and he never went on to go to college. Thankfully, my mother had a different story. She went to Andrew Jackson Elementary and was a Will Rogers Roper until transferring to Central High School for the VOTEC program. She walked across the stage to receive her high school diploma and eventually started at Tulsa Junior College. She was the first person in my family to attend college. And I am very grateful to tell you today that she went on to Northeastern University and she became the first person in my family to graduate from college. My upbringing was a lot different. My parents did not agree on much, but they did fully support my education. They thought it was going to be the difference maker in my life. For years, my parents struggled to make the decisions, but decided to provide a private education for my brother and myself. My mother believed that the schools she went to would not provide me the education I needed. She worked hard and made the sacrifices to send me to the private schools. There were times when we did not have the food or the clothing that my private school classmates had. But I became a believer in public schools, not because I'm a direct product of one, but because I wish I was one. My mother had not seen, I wish my mother had not seen Tulsa public schools as a system unacceptable for her children. I believe every child is entitled to a free and public equality education, regardless of whose the child's parents are, regardless of how deep the child's pockets are, or their parents' pockets, rather, or... or where the child might live. Education is a fundamental block of society and should be protected. Edison is the school I would have loved to attended. Simply put, it is the best school in this city. It is where I met another new teacher three years ago, who I am most grateful to now call my wife. It is the school that I, I would love to send our future children. To end, let me speak directly to anyone with a child who is considering Edison. Please, keep Edison on your list. Edison is a fantastic school, which is unparalleled. Edison has the highest AP pass rate. It has a unique culture of combining the fine arts, athletics, student clubs, and at the core, an engaging and rigorous academic program. Edison should remain on your list, and in fact, Edison should be at the top of your list. Edison is, and Edison will continue to be, the best school in Tulsa to send your child. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Ms. Catherine Holland. We'll move on. Mr. Larry Cagle. Mr. Cagle's not here. We'll move to Melissa Reed. Our next speaker is Ms. Raylene Ingmeyer. Is it Ingmeyer? Okay. Ms. Lisa Kunechka will speak about the culture, climate and leadership of Edison.
Thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight. My name's Lisa Kunechka, and I'm an eleventh grade English teacher at Edison. For everyone who's heard all the negativity about Ms. Spear, I'd like to share with you a little bit of positivity. I have the unique perspective of being a teacher who worked for Ms. Spear for three years at Clinton Middle School before she moved to Edison, and I've also taught at Edison for the past year and a half. First and foremost, Dixie Spear is an outstanding principal, administrator and mentor. She was responsible for recruiting and leading an amazing cohesive and motivated team at Clinton. The people at Clinton were devastated when Ms. Spear was transferred to Edison. She was highly respected by the faculty, staff, students and stakeholders. The climate and culture at Edison was the epitome of mutual respect and professionalism. We were like a family. The idea that Dixie Spear's leadership style involves fear and intimidation is nothing short of ludicrous. I reached out to Dixie Spear's colleagues, and I received an overwhelming response of supportive letters from administrators, teachers and support personnel. I only have five minutes to speak, so I can only share a small sampling. From a current TPS principal, Dixie taught me everything I know about running a school with her own children in mind. She taught me how to put people first. It's been alleged that the Edison teachers exist in an environment of fear and intimidation. I have always found Dixie Spear to be extremely responsive and flexible to teachers' needs. It's unbelievable to me that the words fear and intimidation could be used about Ms. Spear's leadership. But don't take my word for it. Listen to the words of a current Edison teacher. As my evaluator, she had to give me constructive criticism, yet she never belittled me or made me feel as though I was underperforming. She told me if she ever pushed me too hard, too fast, to let her know, and she would completely back off. Does this sound to you like fear and intimidation? One of my former colleagues at Clinton stated, "Ms. Spear treated all school employees with high regard, including the cafeteria workers and custodians. Teachers felt supported in the classrooms with student behavior and teaching practices. They appreciated her efforts to foster open communication." Does this sound like fear and intimidation? A current Edison teacher said, "Ms. Principal Spear is in the halls greeting students and staff regularly. Her communications to the staff are clear, concise and uplifting." Does this sound like fear and intimidation to you? Another TPS teacher said, "Working for Dixie Spear was the first time I worked for a school leader who showed trust in my ability to teach. I felt supported, understood and safe." Does this sound like fear and intimidation to you? I was stunned when the Edison community attacked Ms. Spear so viciously last month. In my opinion, she wasn't even given a chance. Many people would not open their minds to the positive leadership she's displayed in the past. It wasn't just me who noticed the closed minds and hearts. An Edison teacher said, "I watched as many teachers chose not to give her a chance from the very beginning. I've heard of teachers telling their students all the problems going on internally at Edison, and then many times the blame is laid at Dixie's feet. Almost every positive idea that Dixie's tried to implement has been met with eye rolls before they've had a chance to be implemented. I've been extremely disappointed by some of my colleagues." Another Edison teacher was afraid to reveal their name. This teacher said, "It's good to know there's others who support Ms. Spear as well. However, I'll be writing anonymously due to the fear of retaliation." I felt compelled to speak tonight because the public deserves to hear about the real Dixie Spear. The idea that she's a principal who leads with fear and intimidation is completely untrue. Anyone who takes the time to get to know her would know this. In the words of a current teacher at Edison, "If I believe if teachers would support her vision rather than try to tear it down, Edison would be the school today that everyone wants it to be." And in the words of a former colleague, "Ms. Spear cultivated an atmosphere of caring for one another while challenging us and the students to give our best and to treat each other with mutual respect." It was a privilege for me to work with Dixie Spear. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Mr. Shane Manson to talk about cumulative grade calculations and the reasoning behind moving from a quarterly grade associated with the performance of the students' work during the quarter to cumulative calculation.
Thank you. This will lack drama, or passion, I guess I should say, not drama, but passion. My name's Shane Manson. I'm a proud father of two boys at Lee Elementary, and as of about three hours ago, a proud father of an incoming Edison magnet. And I'm a white myself, nineteen ninety-one. As best I can tell, my family's been in public schools since nineteen twenty-two, with a few years in the fifties and seventies and two thousand, so sort of a continuous line of people. And until this, this year, grades have always been calculated on a quarterly basis. And I understand that TPS, maybe it's elementary school, but nobody really seems to know that I'm around, we're doing cumulative grades. So your score in the first quarter is then averaged with your score in the second quarter to get your second quarter grade, and then third quarter would be the cumulative first, second and third. I see this as a punitive grading system. And I'll use my son as an example. He had a bad week first quarter and did poorly on a science, science score, which dropped his grade down to a B. And he wasn't able to recover from that B, ended up being a low B. So he ended up with all As and a B. And then second quarter, he had straight As. So from the beginning of second quarter to the end of second quarter, he had straight As. But his cumulative grade in that science class ended up being an eighty-eight. So, you know, it's not a big deal, but he wasn't recognized on the principal's honor roll. And it may be that TPS wants to get away from the principal's honor roll. I know that there's some indication from our school leadership that they would like to get away from the principal's honor roll. You know, I believe in academic rigor and recognizing students for academic performance. I think it lists all boats. It certainly changed my son's life when he got onto the principal's honor roll fourth quarter. As it stands now, it's almost impossible for him to get on the principal's honor roll, even for the third quarter because of this one grade. So I'd like to understand the reasoning behind moving to a cumulative grading system. Are there other school districts that do this? Is it, do you all see it as being punitive for a child that has a bad week, bad test grades, or maybe gets straight Ds the first quarter and straight As the second quarter? You would think that that child should be recognized for academic excellence for that second quarter, but in this case, that child would have either a high C or a low B. Almost impossible to recover and have the reward of being recognized amongst their peers for academic excellence. Thank you. I don't know what to do next. Thank you. I would say thank you, Madam President and Dr. Gist and the board. I'm totally out of control. I'll get better next time.
Thank you. I didn't say this at the beginning, but there is really no interaction, but your comments are noted and written down and get back to you.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you.
Okay, see you.
We have an additional speaker, Mr. Nate Morris.
Good evening. My name is Nate Morris. I have been with Tulsa Public Schools for six years. For the past two years prior to this one, I had the privilege of serving as dean of students at Nathan Hale High School. And it was a time that I loved. I loved every moment of it, the good times and the more difficult times. I loved it because of my kids, because of my colleagues, and because of the opportunity to be a part of something that was bigger than myself. But most of all, I loved it because it pushed me to truly understand myself and my role in where, my role when things went wrong. Because you see, when I took on this role, I had to quickly realize two things. One was that I was combating a system of injustice that was far bigger than myself. And two was the fact that I was actually a part of the problem. After my first year as a district began to intentionally focus on suspension rates, I took summer to delve into my own data, and what I noticed stunned me. I was suspending kids, particularly our young men of color, at egregious rates. Our young black men were being suspended at two to three times the rate of our young white men. And the fifteen, sixteen school year, Hale had three hundred and forty-two suspensions with a total of three thousand one hundred and thirty-three days suspended. I had put kids out of school for three thousand days. This came alongside the realization that our dropout rate was three times higher than the state average, and less than half of our kids at the time were walking across the stage. All of this was difficult to take in, but it was there in front of me, clear as day. I was a part of the problem. I knew that something had to change. These stark racial disparities required me to be honest with myself in order to best serve my kids. I had to face the biases that I had, like everybody who looks like me has, to change the way that I did my work. So I listened, and I learned from people with perspectives and experiences that were not my own. I saw a deeper, truer understanding of the history of injustice in this country. I worked intentionally to seek advice and wisdom to create data-driven solutions. I love my kids at Hale, and I would not allow my biases to continue to affect their outcomes, nor can we allow biases to affect the outcomes of any child in TPS. So we came together as a school community to find solutions. We implemented numerous programs as alternatives to suspension, including community service, student success plans and restorative justice practices. I can't tell you how many times I would sit in a circle with a group of young men to have a restorative conversation about how the actions of others in the room made them feel in order to prevent a fight. A group of high school boys talking about their feelings in order to prevent a fight. But it worked every time. And by the end of last year, our suspensions were down twenty percent, and our total days suspended were down sixty-four percent, meaning that kids were in school for a total of two thousand more days than the year prior. That same year, our graduation rate, not surprisingly, rose by ten percent. Things were not perfect, and there's still an enormous amount of work to do, but together we made progress. These disparities, though, do not end at Hale. They are consistent throughout our district, our state and our nation. And as of Friday, as a district, we have suspended kids for more than fifteen thousand days this year alone. We know through research that suspensions increase the likelihood a child will drop out of school. A single ninth grade suspension doubles the likelihood of a ninth grader dropping out of school. We know that a child who does drop out of school is three hundred and fifty percent more likely to end up in the criminal justice system and has a full decade shorter life expectancy than a peer who has just two years of college. There are a number of problems that we face regarding education in our city and our state, but I'm going to tell you right now that our kids are not one of them. Our kids who have a privilege, who we have a privilege to serve are not one of these problems. I truly cannot imagine what it must be like to be one of our kids during this particular school year. For some to not know whether they will be able to stay in this country they call home as they await an arbitrary deadline now just two weeks away, for others to have hatred heaped upon them because of their faith or the color of their skin, for all to now have to wonder if their school is still a place where they can be safe, and for many to manage the realities of trauma and poverty each and every day. We, as a community, must work to meet our kids where they are at. We must work fervently to combat the injustices that they face because they are kings and queens and world changers and deserve nothing less. James Baldwin said, "Not everything that is faced can be changed, but nothing can be changed until it is faced." So in this moment, amid our current frustrations, let's truly hear one another, work alongside one another and face these challenges, these injustices boldly together in service of all of our kids. Thank you.
I want to thank all of our speakers tonight, and again, every single one of you for being here. We will move on now to the superintendent's reports and presentations.
Thank you, Madam President, members of the board and everyone joining us. I want to start out just saying that academic achievement is something that we talk about all the time. And we have excellent schools. We've talked a lot about Edison here tonight. We've also talked a little bit about McLean, where the graduation rate has increased dramatically in the last couple of years. That's a focus of ours. But nothing is more important than keeping students safe when they are in our schools. And there are many things that we need to do to keep students safe. We practice drills. We have operation safety plans in place and so forth. But when we're faced with horrific crimes like a school shooting, as the one that happened last week, it heightens our already significant concerns about student safety. We are, of course, as we do frequently, reviewing our practices, our policies and our plans. We are making improvements to those plans based on what we know. We are also making sure that we understand ways that we can improve our physical space. But I do want to say that I want to echo the comments of President Schreiber. The most valuable and best way that we can address these situations is before they happen. We have to be prepared in case they happen and how we respond to them, but we absolutely must listen to one another and pay attention and deal with them before they happen. So we're going to be working with our school leaders and with parent and student leaders across the city and teacher leaders to make sure this message gets out, to make sure that everyone knows how they, what to do when they hear something, to see something and say something, but to know where to go and how we can make that easier for people to remember where to go so that they don't have to try to remember the phone number that we have, but we make that much more easy for them. And then lastly, I just want to talk a little bit about Tulsa. All the years I lived away from Tulsa, I was really, I used to call myself an ambassador. So people would say, "I've never met anyone from Tulsa before when I lived on the East Coast." And I would talk about the beauty of Tulsa, our trees, our hills, our parks, our libraries. But mostly, I talked about the people of Tulsa. I talked about their kindness, their loving hearts, their generous spirits. Here's the thing. Being wonderful Tulsans in no way means that we don't have times of frustration, of fear and even anger. And it certainly does not mean that we don't use our voices as advocates. In fact, love requires us to do that when it's necessary. So hopefully, when we do that, when we make our voices heard and when we advocate, we do it with respect and care and with the assumption that everyone around us is making the best choices they can for the greatest of intentions. And that we believe that about the intention of one another, even when we disagree with the choices that we make with one another, and that we work those out. And what I want to say here tonight, just generally, is that I'm very thankful for the student leaders, for the teacher leaders, for our parent leaders, and certainly for our school leaders and others within our community who work with us to improve, who are open-hearted and generous enough to share feedback and to know that we hear that feedback, we're listening to that feedback and we're continually improving to make sure that we're doing a better and better job in serving our students every day. So thank you for that opportunity, and please be safe getting home this evening. That concludes my remarks, Madam President.
Thank you, Dr. Gist. We do have some non-routine... We do have some non-routine items requiring board action this evening. We'll start with item L1, the recommendation to enter into a resignation agreement with Paul of Flood and authorize its execution by the board, president, and board clerk. Is there a motion?
So moved in a second.
Are there any questions about the resignation? Seeing no questions, I'll call for the vote. Ms. Shelton?
Aye.
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 Item L2 is to receive the superintendent's written recommendation for the dismissal of Ursula Mueller from the Tulsa School District and vote on a motion to set a hearing date, time, and place to take action on said recommendation, and to authorize the clerk of the Board of Education to notify Ms. Mueller of the hearing date, time, and place. If relevant, the board will consider a vote to accept an employee resignation that has been submitted since the posting of this agenda. Are there any resignations? Seeing that there haven't been any, Cindy, do we have a date and time and location for Ms. Mueller's hearing? April tenth, six PM in the Shell Selman Room. Do we have a motion to set a hearing for Ms. Mueller on April, Tuesday, April tenth at six PM here in this room?
So moved in a second.
And I'll call for a vote, Ms. Fay.
Aye.
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 Any new business, Mr. Wade? I'll move to announcements. Again, thank you, everyone, for being here. Please drive safely on your way home. The next regularly scheduled meeting of the Board of Education will be held on Monday, March fifth, twenty eighteen, at six thirty PM in the Shell Selman Room at the Education Center, thirty twenty-seven South Newton Avenue, Tulsa, Oklahoma. Is there a motion to adjourn?
I apologize.
Very sorry.
Can someone deny one second? Is there a second? Ms. Fay can. Second, if she's able to make it. I'll call for the vote, Ms. Nate.